Mr. Venus.
Here.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Yeah.
Mr. McGinley.
President.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton. Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Rado.
Here. Okay, we have public comment on the proposed ordinance on the long-range fiscal and capital plan for Luzerne County. I don't think any of my slips say that it's on this one. Anybody from the public or on Zoom? Karen, now do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, attention. First public hearing is adjourned. Our next one will begin at 5:30.
Yeah.
I found it just recently and they're great. The one in mine is...
Mr. Venus, put your right thumb, counsel.
Mr. Venus.
President.
Mr. Liscavich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Go.
Mr. McGinley.
President.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton, he's absent. Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Rado. Here. We now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the administrative code at section 7.01a by adding section 7.01a is the issuance of electronic equipment. Any members of the public? Anybody on the Zoom?
Is that on the voting machine or?
No, it's on the issuance of electronic equipment. Mark Raybo, is that Mark Raybo?
Yes, it is, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the electronic or the issuance of election equipment, would this be involving equipment that's budgeted for in the budget or in the capital plan? Or is this specified to just laptops? Because under the ordinance, I had a question about that and it says laptops, but I'm not sure if it's if it regards all of election equipment. Because if it is, then I would I would ask that the council consider amending the ordinance to have this considered for budgets or for capital plan when when it's introduced by the county manager. The reason I say this is because if you're if you're issuing equipment, I understand if it's already budgeted in the in the for the election bureau, but shouldn't that be involving the election board first, then coming to the council? Or if it goes to the council first, then it should be it should specify that in the administrative code. So that way the manager knows as far as where to go first to council and then to to the election board. So that needs to be specified as well as, you know, is this going to be introduced at a work session? Or is this is it going to follow the process for the work session and then going to the voting session and having or going to a public hearing? Those things need to be hashed out, I think, because it's kind of it's kind of vague is what I'm trying to get at here, Madam Chair and members of council. So I think that needs to be hashed out, whether you do it here. Actually, I don't know if you could do it here, but at a voting at the voting session, I would I would suggest that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public?
One second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Call this extension. Second public hearing is adjourned. We have another public hearing at 5:45. Are you okay with me?
Yeah.
Am I getting warm? I need a little wind.
We open a window?
You laughing at me?
No, it's a good idea.
I like sunlight.
Well, I got that.
Oh, yeah, not for air, not for air. Oh, yeah, I am a little warm, but it's more than mine.
It's a little bit.
Just a personal...
It's a little.
That's okay.
That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay.
We did the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. You have a roll call this morning? Mr. Venus, put your right thumb, counsel.
Mr. Venus.
President.
Mr. Liscavich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Go.
Mr. McGinley.
President.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton, he's absent. Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Rado. Here. We now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the administrative code at section 7.01a by adding section 7.01a is the issuance of electronic equipment. Any members of the public? Anybody on the Zoom?
Is that on the voting machine or?
No, it's on the issuance of electronic equipment. Mark Raybo, is that Mark Raybo?
Yes, it is, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the electronic or the issuance of election equipment, would this be involving equipment that's budgeted for in the budget or in the capital plan? Or is this specified to just laptops? Because under the ordinance, I had a question about that and it says laptops, but I'm not sure if it's if it regards all of election equipment. Because if it is, then I would I would ask that the council consider amending the ordinance to have this considered for budgets or for capital plan when when it's introduced by the county manager. The reason I say this is because if you're if you're issuing equipment, I understand if it's already budgeted in the in the for the election bureau, but shouldn't that be involving the election board first, then coming to the council? Or if it goes to the council first, then it should be it should specify that in the administrative code. So that way the manager knows as far as where to go first to council and then to to the election board. So that needs to be specified as well as, you know, is this going to be introduced at a work session? Or is this is it going to follow the process for the work session and then going to the voting session and having or going to a public hearing? Those things need to be hashed out, I think, because it's kind of it's kind of vague is what I'm trying to get at here, Madam Chair and members of council. So I think that needs to be hashed out, whether you do it here. Actually, I don't know if you could do it here, but at a voting at the voting session, I would I would suggest that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public?
One second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Call this extension. Second public hearing is adjourned. We have another public hearing at 5:45.
Yeah.
Am I getting warm? I need a little wind. Should we open a window? You laughing at me?
No, it's a good idea.
I like sunlight.
Well, I got that.
Oh, yeah, not for air, not for air. Oh, yeah, I am a little warm, but it's more than mine. It's a little, it's a little bit.
Just a personal...
It's a little.
That's okay.
We did the pledge of allegiance in a moment of chaos.
President.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
President.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Irvin.
Here.
Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Okay, so we now have public comment on the proposed order recommending the admin code adding section 7.03A to 7.03A1 election drop boxes and 7.03A2 automatic section repealer of 7.03A1. Karen Mehta.
The drop boxes, if they're eliminated, I think they're going to make it a hardship for some people to get out and vote. Not everybody can get to polls. And that's one reason. The other reason is I've been a Democrat my entire life and everybody where I vote knows that. I went into the last primary, I went in to vote, and then looking at, looking at it, I said, I wouldn't vote for any of these. And I realized it was Republican ballot. Now, how many times has that happened? And people that aren't aware or not that involved in politics would say, I recognize that name, and just vote by recognizable names. I'm much safer putting my ballot in one of those drop boxes than, than, you know, I mean, I don't think there'd be a problem because I would recognize it. But there may be a problem with some other people, and it had happened in other places. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mehta. William Scott Jr.
Good evening. My name is Bill Scott. I'm from 44th. And I'd just like to offer a couple of broad considerations regarding council's deliberation on the drop box issue. And number one, there's an old adage that comes from the medical field that states first, do no harm. And of course, what that implies is that any action or intervention we take, we want to be considerate of the possible consequences of that action. And what would the problems be emerging from this? What would be some of the negative consequences? My understanding is that if this, if this ordinance is adopted, it could potentially create some complications down the road, specifically legal complications. And I think counsel would be very, very wise to give that some consideration. Secondly, counsel has a tremendous responsibility, a tremendous onus. I mean, you folks are responsible for making decisions that impact on residents throughout Luzern County. That's quite an onus. And it's not a responsibility necessarily to be envy. It's, 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 it's big. And you need to be, in making those decisions, you want to accept as much information and take a look at as much information as possible. And I just like to respectfully caution counsel on the confirmation bias. It's, it's, it's something we all experience. It's, it's human nature. It's a tendency to seek out information that reinforces or confirms our pre-existing beliefs and to disregard and dismiss information that's contrary to those beliefs. And so sometimes there's a tendency to cherry pick information over here in an isolated situation and disregard the mountain of information and evidence that is over here. And I think the mountain of evidence suggests that generally our election process is pretty, pretty good. And I think counsel would be, it would be advisable for counsel to take some caution in tweaking that process. And finally, just generally, a general comment, I think we all need to be really cautious and, and certainly counsel needs to be cautious about certain rhetoric, public statements regarding the election process, particularly in reference to fraud, fraud in the election process. I think suggestions of widespread fraud are not only inaccurate, they're dangerous. They can rile up a lot of people. We've seen the consequences of that. Okay.
Officer Conklin, Robert Conklin.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to.
Okay, wait, hold on, hold on one second. They're saying that they can't hear us, they can't hear us online and they can't hear us outside? Can you guys hear us on the computer? Jonathan? They can't hear us online and they can't hear us out there in the retunda?
I just missed the retunda.
Okay.
I'm working on the online now, trying to figure out if that's true.
Okay. Thank you. Wait a second.
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Conklin.
That's fine. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. First, I want to thank both the council and the election board for having the drop boxes prior election. I was able to use the drop box in the prior election, slightly by accident. I didn't intend to. My wife had requested a mail-in ballot because she was our, an RN, this is during 2020. And she was afraid of either contracting or contaminating people with COVID at that time, so she didn't want to go to the polls. As it turns out, the election board confused us because there were so many people asking for these mail-in ballots. I got the mail-in ballots, she did not. Now I had a mail-in ballot that I had to do something with. Now it's getting election time and I had to get rid of it, or I had to go and vote. I could have taken it to the election where my voting place was and gone through them and had the row with them and gone through, how do I vote? Then they would have to max that up later. Instead, I just filled it out. I went down to Wilkes-Barre and I dropped it in the box. It was very easy. It was easier for the election board. It was easy for me. While I was there, I was amazed. There were two lines, one line of people bringing them in to fill them out, and another line of people bring, to actually put them in the box. And they were trying to complete them. And as you know, at that time, the post office lost their mind and got rid of all the automatic sorting machines. So what took two to three days in mail now took two to three weeks in mail. So nobody was going to put them in the mail. So it was one of those things that the boxes solved a couple of problems. They made it more effective and more efficient for the election board. It made it more practical, and then they encompassed problems that they didn't even know would exist. And yet, here we had an alternative that was easy and was taken care of. I have to say, that day I was extremely proud. There were lines of huge lines there. I later went with my wife when she went to vote. If you recall, they were going to have armed citizens at the polls and she was afraid to go alone. There were long lines. I saw all my neighbors all lined up to vote. I mean, it was a great experience. I was incredibly proud, and I am still angry to this very day about the bull crap that they ended up talking about, that this was fraud. It wasn't fraud. It was the best election we ever had. And that's what should happen each and every time. We should facilitate everybody's voting. We should make it easier. We should encourage it. If we don't do that, everything we said in the pledge allegiance when we first came in is worthless. They're hollow words. We need people to exercise their rights. I really encourage you to vote against this ordinance. It's, the ordinance is not in keeping in the tone or the intent of our charter. It is not based, we're removing something from the election board, a tool they have to do their jobs without any consideration for cost or consideration of need. Thank you, gentlemen.
Ms. Bezinski.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kathy Bezinski. I'm from Hanover Township. And as some of you may or may not be aware, I am the chair of Luzern County Democratic Committee. But I'm not here in that official capacity today. I am here as a resident, a taxpayer, and a voter who can strongly echo the sentiments of the previous speakers that drop boxes are effective, the mail-in or drop-off process encourages more people to vote. And I really think that everything should be done to maintain that process. It is working and getting better through the hard work, the election board and the election bureau with each passing election that takes place in Luzern County. I think our charter is clear. The election board is to be an independent board, which is to make decisions, nonpartisan decisions, that should not be influenced by any of our elected officials. I think should this ordinance go forward, as the one gentleman said, there's a very strong chance that it will end up in litigation. Who pays for that? My tax dollars, the dollars of every taxpayer in the room, and the dollars of every taxpayer across Luzern County. But most importantly, I think changing this and hindering the availability of the, the drop boxes truly sends a message out that undermines the voting process entirely in Luzern County. Please don't send that message. And I'd like to remind all of you that no matter what party you represent, when you come to, when you come here and you are elected and you are sworn in, you don't just represent people from that party. You represent everyone in Luzern County. And please do your job. Do what's right. Make it as convenient as possible for as many voters in Luzern County to cast their ballot. Do not do anything to hinder the current state with the availability of the ballot drop boxes. And quite honestly, I think there should be more. Thank you so much for your time here this afternoon, and I really appreciate it. And hope you do the right thing when you pass your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James Keeney.
Hello, my name is Jim Keeney from Pittsburgh, from Pittston. And I have never come to the council meeting before. And, but I'm very disturbed by what I'm hearing and what I found out. And I am motivated by, I think it's a very irresponsible action that this council intends to pass. This is, and it stated, the county of Luzern shall not permit, utilize, fund, or compensate any county employee, contractors, third party, or any nonprofit groups to logistically move any election drop boxes for primary, general, or special elections throughout the county unless explicitly written into law within Pennsylvania. Now, when I, when I thought of this, I thought of that what the editor wrote from Citizen's Voice, he said, "Brian Thornton's statement that the no-excuse mail-in ballot system is full of fraud is an unsupported and totally partisan statement." And the editor went on, "Since when do elected officials have the authority to pronounce blanket statements without a shred of evidence? Since when does the Luzern County Council have the right to make statements on behalf of the people of Luzern County? Certainly, a referendum would be necessary here. Why else is counsel even considering such an insidious and clearly grandstanding motion?" And if you think about it, five states throughout, throughout the United States conduct all elections by mail. Twenty-nine others, and the District of Columbia, allow any voter to register as an absentee ballot. And I know, as, as I just heard, that for my part, I never voted by mail, but I found that not only convenient, but by having the ballot in my hands, I became a more informed voter. And I thought that mailing and voting, mail-in voting enables more people to vote, as they do not need to worry about travel plans, inclement weather, sickness, employment, childcare, or any other concerns that may prevent their trip to the voting booth. It is very troubling that with all the legitimate concerns facing the citizens of Luzern County, this council has decided to find ways to disenfranchise its citizens, to put obstacles to voting, and needlessly raise doubts about election integrity. No one on this council should sink so low as to vote yes in this one. Voting yes will demonstrate that you do not have the best interests of your constituents in mind. And instead, or intend to push false words and play to our worst fears. And although it gets a little bit dimmer, but this is just another light that you can dim, and democracy will die in darkness. Thanks.
Thank you. Jacqueline Luxed Lawrence, am I saying that correctly?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say, are you aware of how much money the county saved on return postage for ballot boxes? For the primary, the county saved $2,413. Also, one of the 2022 policy priorities of the National Association of Counties, which Luzern County belongs to, is to maintain election integrity and strengthen election safety. In the United States, the nation's 3,069 counties traditionally administer and fund elections at the local level, including overseeing polling places and coordinating poll workers for federal, state, and local elections. County election officials work diligently with federal, state, and other local election officials to ensure the safety and security of our voting system. County election officials strive to administer elections in a way that is accurate, safe, secure, and accessible for all voters. Counties oppose legislation that impose impractical requirements on the election process that adversely affect the conduct of state and local elections. Additionally, counties support legislation requiring federal entities to work with local governments to increase cybersecurity in elections and allocate funding directly to counties. Furthermore, counties oppose any new unfunded mandates and federal initiatives that fail to protect the county. I just wanted to remind you of that mission statement.
Thank you. Karen Lurk.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here this evening. I have been here before, so it is no secret that I oppose this. Taking away an option to vote, which is what we're doing, we are defunding the ballot drop off boxes. So we are banning them without banning them. This is voter obstruction. This option to vote makes it easier for people in general. They don't need an excuse to say that it's easier for them. Their reasons are their own. Taking it away, as someone else mentioned, it does disenfranchise them. We are supposed to be able to vote in every election. And we can. It is our job to make sure that it is as easy as possible for voters to be able to vote in every election. And taking away a convenient option is not making it easier, it's making it harder. Telling us that we're not going to ban the ballot drop off boxes, we're just going to make sure they're not funded so we can't use them, is still banning the ballot drop off boxes. It's worded very cleverly, but the outcome is the same. So I'm going to ask everyone here to vote against this ordinance and keep us this option to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCain.
Yeah, Joe McCain from Exeter. Most of the men at this table here are aware that I came to these meetings. When I walked in, I brought up a couple of issues about different things in the county, and they told me you got to go to the sanitary authority. But why is the council jumping in and trying to change the ballot boxes? It worked great. So why are you getting involved? Let the people do their job, you know? So many people, people quit in the last couple of months on the election committee because they're being interrupted. At this time, I read in today's paper, it costs $390,000 to get the machine. No guarantee that 67 counties is going to get this money. And then, down the road, you're going to have to pay $315,000 for this purchase of the machine this year, followed by $35,000 from 2023 to 2027. So like I said, we have a budget at the beginning of the year. Why are you interrupting the budget and trying to change things in the election bureau? I appreciate it if you don't touch it and let things work. Thank you.
Thank you for your view. Chris Gillis.
Outside, sir.
Thank you.
Here we are again, Stephen. Before I get started, I want to say that you have a crowd of people out here in the lobby who have no idea what's going on. For all the money and time and effort that you guys spend trying to inform the public of what's going on, there are people out there watching the TV with no sound. They have no idea what's going on here. It's not fair to them, and you really need to do something about it. Okay? Okay? We're being disenfranchised. We came all the way down here tonight, and, and it's like we're being blocked out of the meeting. Okay, now, Stephen, this is the third time I've had to come down here. I would think that by this time, you would have known.
The council as a whole, not individual council members, just the whole council, please.
Anyone who votes yes on, on limiting the delivery and pickup of drop boxes is trying to, to do a end run around the law. The state Republicans have said that drop boxes are illegal for us to use. And you're trying to figure out some kind of a technicality, Stephen, that, that keeps us from using those boxes. There's no law that says that they can't be moved by ordinary citizens who want to do the will of the county and make sure that these are available. So I will make sure that those boxes are moved regardless of your vote. And just be aware that if you vote yes, you're voting to disenfranchise not just Democrats, there are a lot of Republicans in the back mountain too. A lot of them are my friends, and they're upset. I don't know why you would want to go against both parties, because the Republican Party of Pennsylvania has said drop boxes are fine. Democratic Party likes them too. So I don't know what party you would go along with to try to disenfranchise us of our right to use those boxes. But just keep in mind that you're here to serve your constituents. That is, the citizens of Luzern County, Pennsylvania, don't use your own.
This is going to go on all night. They got probably 100 people out there. Oh, it's me.
To preserve the drop boxes. And if you don't, I'm telling you right now, I will find a way to make sure that they get moved. Okay? So I will be doing my job for the citizens of Luzern County. Do yours. And please, let us participate in the meeting. Get a speaker out there that works. We can't hear you guys. We have no idea what's going on. Get a speaker out there that works. We can't hear you guys. We have no idea what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, first, if you're a member of the public on the Zoom, we, we can hear a couple of you talking, so just make sure you're muted. Also, do we have sound out there yet?
They're working on it.
Okay. Peter Ian W. I don't want to really mess up your last name. Peter Ian? Wojcieszka? Is there a Peterlin Wojcieszka? Peterlin? Peterlin Wojcieszka? Hello?
Yes, it's Peterlin Wojcieszka. That's correct.
Lady, where is this? Hold on. We're echoing.
Oh, it's probably because I brought my cellphone in because that's the only way we can hear you out there. So I will mute it. Am I allowed to ask a couple of questions?
So if you want to make your comments first, because you only have three minutes, so give your comments and then we'll save room for questions at the end if you want.
Okay, I didn't follow this. I've never come to a county council meeting, but I think it's extremely important that you keep the ballot boxes for everyone. This is a free country. Everyone is allowed to vote. We are not in the 20th century, and we are not in the 19th century. We are in the 21st century. There are many people who have jobs that do not allow them to come and vote during the time that the actual election facilities are open. Many people have different hours that they can vote. And having drop boxes in place allows them to make their vote known. That's basically all I have to say. Now may I have questions? May I have some questions? Ask some questions, rather. Okay, earlier today in the Citizens Voice, I saw, I read about concerns for the financial amount of what the ballot box, excuse me, ballot boxes would cost to keep continuing running. And does anybody have that figure? There was a concern about, I, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he was very concerned that keeping the ballot boxes would be some kind of financial difficulty. Yes? No comment? Nobody knows what the cost of the ballot boxes is?
Ballot boxes were already purchased last year.
Okay.
And there's no cost.
Well, maybe I misunderstood the Citizens Voice reporter because someone.
The ballot box itself has been purchased already.
And how many are there?
Three, we counted there. There are four.
There are now four. Okay. And as I understand.
Four plus the one in, in place. So actually, there's five.
Five. Okay, great. All right. So I really do not understand what the concern is about ballot boxes and the supposed fraud. Because the only fraud that I ever read about was a, excuse me, white Republican older gentleman who forged his dead mother's voting ballot. So that's just something right there. But at any rate, my point is, I strongly recommend that you keep the ballot boxes where they belong so that all people of Luzern County can continue to vote at their convenience, at their time, not only when the election places are open, but you make it open to everybody in this 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Really quickly, can you tell us what municipality you reside in? It's not listed on here.
Edwards.
Thank you. Rick Williams? Thank you.
Andrew, you made a suggestion. Speaker will come in and give you other names, sort of line first up.
My name is Rick Williams. I'm a resident of Kingston. There is no sound in the attendance. I, one of the most important responsibilities of not only the council, but the administration is the fiduciary responsibility to make sure you use the limited resources of the county responsibly. In 2006, Mayor Lou Barletta and the Hazleton City Council passed an, a anti-immigration piece of legislation at the time that occurred. They were warned that it was probably illegal to do that, but they pushed ahead in spite of that. And by the time the dust had settled and the law had been repealed, the citizens of Hazleton paid $1.4 million in legal costs. I fear that this ordinance has that potential to use up the limited resources of the county for legal costs and other costs that really don't make any sense at all. I think that the county is a member of the County Council or County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. There are lobbying entity in Harrisburg, and I believe there's another institution that the county might be a member of. I think it would be appropriate to approach them and ask them to lobby on behalf of the issues you may have about the election laws. I also suggest that you consult the legislative members of the House and the Senate of Pennsylvania. Let them know what you think so that they treat this thing as a statewide issue and not a little piecemeal issue. I think your responsibility is to conduct secure, assist the board of elections to conduct secure and easy elections. There are lots of different kinds of people in Luzern County that have difficulty getting to the polls on election day. And for whatever reason, their family situation, their employment situation, or their ability to move about, their health situation makes drop boxes easy way to vote. So I encourage you to vote against this ordinance and focus on making secure and easy elections. Thank you all.
Thank you. David Strang is going to be next. David Strang will be next, if we can announce that. Strang?
Yeah, they've had it. It's just, I don't know if somebody tripped over it or whatever. It was working before we went in and checked. He's changed speakers again, so, yeah, they can, it's not great. The acoustics in there are bad.
But it's sound, okay.
Yeah, when I walked in. Yeah, it was working, too.
Thank you. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'm trying my best to articulate my views. As we all know, we've had one of the most secure elections this past cycle. That's not me saying that, that's the government itself saying. And part of that is because of the ballot boxes and mail-in. Understand the concerns of people of it, but it is really, really useful and necessary in this day and age. And to defund our ability to give people access to the ballot box is pushing us back fifty years. That's, that's about it. I couldn't elaborate more, but I honestly only heard about this initiative via some phone call through some organization. Let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Bell. Mr. Bell?
Good evening. My name is James Bell. I'm a resident of Kingston. And I'm here to encourage you to vote against the motion to defund the drop boxes. I think to me, that sounds like a really sneaky end run to limit voting access in a place where there's little to no evidence of any voter fraud, let alone in the country. This is being pushed as a lie, and I think it would do us no justice to have that defunded. People rely on dropping off their ballots at the boxes. I've done it. Seems like a good system. And I would hope that you would consider that and deny the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Casaro? Mary Ann? Petra? Petia? Mary Ann? Petia? Petra? I can't, this. Thank you. And then after Ms. Petia is Mr. Burns, if you want to let him know William Burns. This way we can just try to. Thank you so much. Hello? Hi.
I'm here, citizen, resident of Luzern County, active voter, to talk about this extreme measure, and it is an extreme measure, to defund the ballot boxes, the drop boxes, because it is based on a lie. We had a free, fair election. There was no widespread fraud. And the whole idea that it's about election integrity, you are disenfranchising voters, not just Democrats. You are disenfranchising Republicans as well. You are disenfranchising older people who have hard times standing in line. You are disenfranchising people who work two and three jobs to support their families. You are disenfranchising people who may not be able to vote on that day for whatever reason, but because they have the ability to vote early and to go over their ballots very carefully and drop them off, you are including them in the voting process. We want people actively involved. There is so much apathy in our system. There are too many lies. There's too many, there's too much misinformation. I'm all for, for election integrity, but we want as many voters as we can from across the spectrum to have the ability to use their voices and their rights as citizens and residents of this county. So thank you very much.
Thank you. William Burns? Mark Schaefer?
Okay, hi. My name is William Burns, resident of Wokesbury City. By election day this November 1st, despite the fact that I look like I'm 25 years old, or maybe 71. I've had problems with my back since I was in my 30s. That's not getting any better. Standing in place for more than a minute is painful. Standing here, talking to you, is painful. Having to stand on line to vote will be painful. The postal system has been damaged by corrupt administration. So voting by mail has become a much less reliable possibility. Provision of drop boxes makes votes manageable. For people like me, many other people, whether they have back problems or not, senior citizens or not, or they have any other difficulties, challenges that makes it difficult for them to get to, vote in person, drop boxes help. They're good. Not just the Democrats, not just Republicans, for every voter. I have voted in every election since I was turned 18 years old in 1969. I don't want to miss any. Not having the drop boxes makes a difference. We all know why this is happening. It's based on a lie. People are pretending there is voter fraud when there isn't. They're pretending that an election was stolen when it wasn't. The intent of this proposal is to suppress votes. My vote and the votes of many of your own people, too, it is a bad thing. It is anti-democratic, and it should be, it should be shut down. Thank you.
Mr. Burns? Mr. Schaefer? And then after Mr. Schaefer will be Carol Hossa.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mark Schaefer. I'm from Wilkes-Barre. I'm obviously talking about the Dropbox ordinance today. The most obvious issue with this ordinance to me is it's blatantly not your job to do this. The cap, the new charter, which was adopted during home rule, very clearly makes matters of the election the, the job of the election bureau. And that's specifically a result of why we have a home rule charter. Home rule charter was brought about because of concerns about corruption, county council using its power to advantage themselves and not the voters. And that is transparently what this ordinance is about. The Board of Elections won't go along with what a few members of council want, so they're making an end run around the Board of Elections to exert their power to suppress the votes. This is a classic example of old school, what ironically, the Republicans on council rant about Luzern County corruption. You guys are doing the perfect example of it that I've ever seen, and it's an impressive piece of work from you guys. This is so transparently an attempt to suppress the vote. We all know what happened last year. There was no evidence of fraud except for one guy who voted for Trump. And you guys just saw that turnout exploded. You're worried about turnout being high, so you want to stop that from happening. Absentee drop boxes like this are far more secure than your alternative of putting it in your mailbox where no one is watching it. There is no supervision. It's unsupervised for however long you put it in your mailbox to when the mailman comes. So if your concern is supervision, security, this is a clear step backward, and it's just obvious what the intent of this is. Countless, countless states around the country have been voting like this for years and have never had a problem. My brother lived in Colorado for a few years. They've been doing mail-in voting since the 80s, if not earlier. And that's, almost everyone votes exclusively by mail. Do you guys think that Colorado, every election is fraudulent? Right-wingers like Laura Boebert get elected fine. It doesn't seem to be a Democratic plot over there. So I don't think you have to worry about mail-in violence being some kind of fraud. If you guys want to worry about fraud, you should make it easier for people to vote. We could extend in-person voting, give people more time. Because as everyone here has pointed out, we live in an area where a lot of people work second or third shift. So when you do that, getting to the polls on election day is a real pain. And if you're eliminating more ways for people to vote other than on election day, it's just going to turn down turnout. I've mentioned on previous meetings, look up what the stats are on what voter turnout is in our off-year elections. I ran for city council in Wilkes-Barre in 2019. Turnout in the primary was like 20%. And if you're looking at that and saying, woo, our elections are going great, we don't need more people to vote, I don't know what's wrong with you.
All right. So, we have Carol Hessa? And then after that, Brian Dugess?
Dugess. My name is Carol Hessa. I'm a resident of Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. And I'm here to tell you that I agree with majority of what's been said here tonight. I use the ballot drop box myself. I have a back problem. Last time I used the ballot drop box, I was actually working on Election Day. So, I knew I was going to be able to get to my poll. I was the president judge of elections for Ward 12. I think the ordinance is a blatant attempt to suppress the number of voters that can, people who can participate in elections. Elderly, we have close to 20% of our population in Luzern County is elderly. I just think we should be finding ways to expand people's opportunities to vote and not eliminating and restricting them. So, I urge county councils to vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? Okay. I think Thomas is next. He's in here. And then one more. I have Beth Calpin.
So, my name is Brian Dugess. I'm from Liam. I was a civics teacher for many years. I know the importance of democracy, that everybody has a right to vote. And we expect everybody in this county to be able to have the right to vote. That means that we expect our elected officials in this commission and government officials to find ways to overcome barriers and to help people get their votes heard. We expect you, as voting citizens in this county, to help us with this. And we're going to hold you to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugess. Thomas Delahanty?
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Thomas Delahanty. If this were a matter of convenience, I wouldn't be here. But it's not a matter of convenience. It's a matter of necessity. I don't have to enumerate all the reasons that have been listed before. It's like child care. It's one I didn't think of before, but that's an excellent example of women who can't show up or men who can't show up because of child care, something simple like that. It's, this isn't, this isn't a proposition that we're hoping to have. This is to suppress something we already have. Talk to a veteran who has mental problems. Talk to, talk to a veteran's family who doesn't have the veteran anymore. And we're, have the, and this is the arrogance to suppress voting? The arrogance? This is nothing more than unabashed suppression of the vote. And you should be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
Beth Calpin? Oh, give me one second. We'll run the mic over you. Can you just? Just making sure it's like kind of near her. Sorry. I just want to make sure the people on the computer can hear you too.
Okay. Okay. I find myself here to understand why Luzern County government is so eager to take away voting at RAS. In 2020, RAS was the largest donation district. I would like to think that local and state government would use this as a template and make voting easier for all its citizens. The only reason I can see for denying the option of a drop box is to give it an obstacle for voters who use this to make spending a vote easier. Let me share my experience. I used a drop box for a few reasons. First, my mail service has been inconsistently, inconsistent at best for the past few years. I requested a mail-in ballot on two separate occasions. On one occasion, the ballot never arrived, and the other, it arrived after Election Day. I did not request them at the last moment. I requested them weeks before Election Day. I've been handicapped for the last 10 years, so I've been using paper ballots for that law. It gave me time to research candidates, to be sure the person I feel who will advocate best for my interest as a woman, a mother, a disabled person, and a daughter. I've encouraged my adult children to do the same sort of research based on their situation. Let me also tell you that the drop box in Wilkes-Barre is not convenient law. I have to go out of my way and drop it off. I really wish you would put one in the backpack. I believe that if we really want to provide every citizen with an opportunity to place and inform vote, every person should be able to get paper ballots. They should have the opportunity to return it the way that suits their needs. Being nervous about how drop boxes need to vote abroad is a non-issue. There are enough safeguards in place to defend this deserve. If people want to vote at the polls, that's great. But for many of us, it is not an option, whether due to disability, work schedules, kids' schedules, or just not enough hours in the day. The ability to drop a ballot in the box is a huge help to many people.
Thank you. Okay. I have no more clips. There are a bunch of hands raised on the Zoom. Okay. I don't have any more, but you can come up and tap on.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Jordan. I'm from Sugarloaf Township. Good evening, everybody. It's awesome to see so many speakers here tonight. I'd like to start what I'm going to say to let you know that I am not here for Republican or Democrat. I am here on a ballot security issue. Okay. The last speaker, one of the last speakers spoke about security lacking in the post office. Well, I'd like to pose a question. And I did say this earlier at an election board meeting. If you were told to take your ballot and put it in an unsurveilled and unsecured box in a public location with nobody watching it, no security whatsoever, would you honestly say that that is ballot, that that is ballot security? Well, I am here for ballot security. So, I'd like to continue with the topic, the controversial topic of drop boxes. Now, some of our neighboring counties do not even use drop boxes for the controversial reason. Examples of this are School Hill and Lancaster Counties. Other counties are also in considerations to discontinue the use of drop boxes because of the negative aspects associated with it, namely, security. We are not saying that people cannot vote. They only have to vote in person. We're not signaling out one person with a disability. We're not disenfranchising anyone. We want your vote to be secure. So, Mr. Urban's proposal is one way to counteract the controversies that surround drop boxes. Now, considering that the utilization of this type of voting was thrown at us, it is not put into law. Absolute mail-in voting was, drop boxes were not. This was thrown at us without public discourse and without wholehearted consent from the taxpayers. So, I ask you as a taxpayer, and I represent a group of taxpayers, please do not use taxpayer money to fund a contentious issue. We are not okay with drop boxes because of ballot security. So, while deliberating your vote, either yea or nay on this proposal, please keep in mind that if you are waiting for the perfect solution or a better proposal to come along, in reality, this is the best solution at our disposal this very moment. So, just be aware, we don't, our group of ballot security does not want to take away your chance to vote. But the Constitution calls for the integrity of the vote, not the convenience of the vote. Thank you all. I hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that are here before we start on the Zoom?
This is Carol Wilkes Barre. I got to applaud you. You turned out, I wish sometimes I was a Democrat because, boy, you guys know how to charge your party. You are awesome. I wish our leaders was as good as you. But yeah, I mean, the talking points are the talking points. It's redundant. It is what it is. You know, there's a few things that are going along in our country. Illegal immigration, voter integrity, welfare, where we're giving out welfare, housing markets crushed because of illegals coming in. Everything, our country is going away. America is ceasing to exist. And the people in power are taking our freedoms away. And I definitely want people with handicaps to be able to vote. I want veterans to vote. I want to make it as easy as possible for them to vote. I just want to make it so it's a fair election. Hey, I agree. There was one guy that voted for Trump that cheated. I think he should go to jail. I also think the people that threw the ballots of the, in an electric bureau, that they disregarded the veterans' votes. And there are mistakes. And we really don't, we don't have video cameras on the ballot boxes. And the last director of elections said he caught two people stuffing the ballots. But you won't hear that from the Democrats. They'll only hear about the one guy. It happens. Cheating happens. We've just got to stop it from happening as much as we humanly possibly can. I agree. It stinks. I work too. I really think we should have Election Day off. I think it should be a national holiday. I really do. I think we should, you know, we got to come to a point where we have to have integrity and honesty, and we don't get it from either side. And I, I want this to happen. I do want you guys to vote for it because, again, it's the best thing possible. If we had came up with a different solution, maybe, but there's a stamp. Mistakes happen. The young lady over there, I feel bad for her. Wish that that didn't happen to you, but our election bureau is not the best either. So, it's not a perfect world. It's not a perfect job. But again, America is eroding. And if we don't have election integrity, that means we don't have the people elected fairly. And if the people are cheating, then what do we have? Then why do we even vote? Just let the bureaucracy, the people in power do whatever they want. Let them get drunk, drive and slash their car because they're married to Nancy Pelosi to get off. Or if they don't like the president, the FBI can raid their houses. And, you know, pretty soon, we're going to be communist Russia, and they're going to take our guns away. And 6 million of us are going to die. We need to make a stand, and thank you for listening.
Ms. Kara Kruger?
Chiaric. Kara Kruger is an Imdom. In Irish, I just said hello and I told you my name. I am from Plains Township. Almost half a millennia ago, the first wave of my family settled here, from our home country of Ireland. I'm telling you this to exemplify the magnitude of connection family has in my life and that my blood has been Pennsylvanian since before the concept even existed. This November, the Commonwealth will hold an election that can mean I can no longer live here with the family and on ancestral land that I hold so dear. I've spoken at the last two meetings about why, for everyone, mail drop boxes are important and that they need to stay funded. Today, as much as I truly do not want to have to do this, I'm going to tell you more about me so you can understand exactly what you're potentially doing by voting yay. From the outside, I may look fine, but I can assure you that I am anything but. I have several disabilities and I struggle every day to do the most basic things, every day. All my life, I have wanted nothing in the entire world more than to be close with my family and to one day starve one of my own. That is my dream. During the height of the pandemic, I was on a form of chemotherapy and was essentially bedridden for about a year. At this time, I was also subjected to immense testing. It was then that I found out that my dream of carrying a child would never come to be. A child in my body has about a 10% chance of being born healthy. And due to my conditions, my chance of surviving childbirth is not much better. I warn the children that I cannot have every day. And I kept this information private because it was mine and my loss to bear and no one else's business. When Roe v. Wade was overturned and the state pushed Senate Bill 106 onto the ballot, I decided that I have to share my story so that people can see the gravity of their decisions when they go to the polls and the people that they hurt, the real people they hurt. These boxes can make a difference because helping people like me cast their vote can mean life or death for them. And I am one of those people. Since I started telling my story, I have been called every name under the sun, and I have been threatened with violence. And I have been told just not to get pregnant. And that's the one that hurts the most and the only one that actually bothers me. Because when I was 19 in a several-month span, I was assaulted twice by men that I thought were my friends and that I truly believed that I could have trusted my life with. Where was my opportunity for preventative measure in that? Where was my understanding of consequence and my decision? Where was my voice in that? This meeting is about so much more than a budget issue. It is about an election and people's voices. This election determines whether there is any right to abortion in the state of Pennsylvania, taxpayer-funded or otherwise.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger.
Thank you. Bonche.
Any other members of the public?
We, Sugarloaf Township.
I'm sorry.
I am here, Sugarloaf Township. Bush, B-U-S-C-H. I am here to urge the council to vote for this. All of these people that are complaining of all of these things, I understand it. Before 2020, everyone voted. There is absentee ballots. And if you have that bad of a disability, you go to the polls and you automatically go to the front. I'm a poll worker, and I know that. They go to the front of the line. So, this, all of this hardship, don't play on people's emotions. I urge you all to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that are here in person? Anybody out in the room, if you guys can hear me? All right. We're going to move on to the Zoom, but if there's anybody out in the room that wants to speak, you just come in. But we'll move on to the Zoom. People with their hand raised. It looks like Rick Davis has his hand up.
Yes. I urge council to vote for this ordinance.
Rick, can you see where you're from? Could you see?
Rick Davis, Black Creek Township.
Thank you.
I urge council to vote for this ordinance. I also, too, work the polls. And of course, too, the people do go to the front of the lines that have disabilities. Up until 2020, everybody voted in person all the time, although there's absentee ballots. I don't, I agree with Ms. Bush with this, with the hardship things, people playing on people's emotions. This is also not just about removing the boxes. It's about, you know, our tax dollars being spent on this, you know, through our council and that. It, you know, the bureau has, has their own budget and everything. We don't need our people, council employees and that, going out and about collecting these boxes. And again, too, on the security issue, there's vast, vast problems with security. Nobody watches these boxes. Again, this would be the best move to enforce election integrity, which is a main issue on both sides of the aisle. So, I urge council to please vote for this ordinance. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Looks like Beth Hartman? Beth, your hand's up, but you're muted. Beth, we can't hear you. We'll come back to you. You might, oh, Beth, do you want to try hitting star six? If you're on your phone? If you're on your phone? Nope, we can't hear. There's a P.E. Smith?
Hi, my name is Patrick Smith from Hanover Township. And I would encourage council to vote against this ordinance. We're hearing a lot of people complaining about all these problems of a, a chance of having a problem with the election, but they haven't shown any proof. And I think you're going to make it a lot easier for people working two and three jobs and for disabled people to be able to vote and have their say in an election. Thank you.
Thank you. There's Denise.
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Denise Davis. I am from Black Creek Township. I'm asking the Luzern County Council to vote yes on the ordinance. It's your, your job to spend the taxpayers' money wisely. And I don't believe you should be intimidated by the threats of litigation and such from people that want the boxes. As far as proof of fraud, the only cha, the only reason we don't have proof of fraud is because it's not allowed to be shown. There has been hundreds, if not thousands of cases right here in Pennsylvania. I belong to a patriot coalition of thousands of people and we have been to the Harrisburg Capitol with the Declaration of Voter Integrity. We know what is going on in this state and this country. And I do not want the boxes. In fact, I don't want the mail-in ballots. We should go back to in-person voting with voter ID, the way it used to be. People managed to get to the polls. We had absentee ballots for the people that were disabled and the poor veterans and all the other ones that could not get there. My mother was 94 years old. She did absentee ballots for years. She couldn't walk and she managed to vote every year. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hartman, do you have sound now? Beth Hartman? Joanna Perez?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much. My name is Johanna Perez Shavelin from Jackson Township. I want to just tell a brief little story. 1980, my mother came home from a long day of work. But unlike most days when she looked exhausted, um, she was smiling from ear to ear. I was a little eight-year-old girl and I asked my mom, why are you so happy? And in her strong Dominican accent, she said, I became a citizen today and I'm registered to vote and I have a voice. And I thought of voting to make my exhausted mother that happy. I have to vote. And when I was 18 years old, one of the first things I did was register to vote. And I've done my best ever since then to vote in every election. Now I'm an RN, a mother, a voter and a taxpayer. And I strongly support drop boxes. As a busy mom of two children and who works full-time, having the ability to vote on my own time and on my own schedule allows me to perform my patriotic duty without having to worry that I'm not going to make it on election day. There were some days where I thought I wasn't going to be able to get off work in time. Now I know that that isn't a worry. I know drop boxes are safe and secure and their integrity is guaranteed because I can track my vote online and I can see when it has been counted. I check that website every day. Eliminated the drop, excuse me, eliminating the drop boxes is undemocratic and hurts us all of us, especially those of us who have the most obstacles to vote. For example, the elderly, the sick and people with multiple jobs and kids. Allegations of fraud have been proven over and over to be false. I ask you, the council, to please vote against this ordinance and don't give in to unfounded fear. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Looks like Tara Bellio? Tara?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, hi, my name is Tara Bellio. I'm from Wilkes-Barre City. First, I want to just preface this by saying that people should have, I think, a little bit more empathy for those whose physical limitations prevent them from voting in person. Nobody is playing any, anyone's emotions. They are just telling their truths. I believe that voting should be and continue to be easy for every voter in Luzern County. Putting any obstacles to prevent a hinder or to make it harder for our citizens to vote is ultimately disenfranchising those same voters who also vote for everyone on this council. I personally have voted by mail. And when I have that ballot in my hand, I feel like a much more informed voter. I'm able to research each candidate so I can become a more informed voter. I have used the county drop box and have found it to be extremely convenient. I know many others who feel the same way that I do. Not everyone is able to vote in person and their reasons are just as valid as those who choose to vote in person. Voting access should not be a partisan issue. And the notion that our last election is some, was somehow fraudulent is based on nothing but lies and misinformation with zero credible evidence. We should be encouraging as many people to vote as possible. As residents' abilities to vote should be of the utmost importance to our democracy. And taking away drop boxes would be ultimately disenfranchising the voters of Luzern County. Taking them away would not only, I'm sorry, taking them away would not be forward progress. It would only be holding us back. I urge you to continue to keep our drop boxes. Do not vote to defund the access to the drop boxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yay! It only took me five times. I'm sorry. So first I want to say that I am so proud of everybody that is there in person tonight. I love to see citizens out. I know my mother is extremely happy up in heaven today for sure. Ballot boxes, the, during the pandemic with my mom, the first time she did the, she always voted, she always worked the polls, she always petitioned, whatever. The first, um, one of the elections, we used the ballot box at Penn Place. There was a, a security guard standing at that ballot box when we went. So there was somebody watching the one at Penn Place. Um, because I, we both walked in together. She put hers in, I put mine in and we went out. Then, right before she passed away, May of last year, the mail was all screwed up and she did not get her mail-in ballot. And the day that, like, the day after that she could file, like, the last day for mail-in ballot, um, I called the courthouse and I'm like, she doesn't have her mail-in ballot. So I had to go to the courthouse or Board of Elections on Penn Place, get a paper that basically like I could carry her ballot because she was dying, carry her ballot in for her because she's like, I'm not going anywhere until I vote. So I went and I did that part of it. But those ballot boxes, like, we, we didn't trust the mail. So after I did that, I got her ballot in the mail and I kept that with stuff from her passing to show with the, the timestamp of when she got that ballot. So I'm all for the, the, um, ballot boxes. I think everybody needs the right to vote. My other comment real quick is on number four, I think it is. I had to leave, I'm pulled over on the side of the road. So I think it's number four.
We're not even on the agenda yet. This is still the public hearing, so we have to stick to just this.
Okay, okay. All right, sorry.
Yeah, we're not, we didn't even get to the voting session yet.
That's okay. So I would, I would recommend, and, and, and this is not, for me, it's not a Republican, it's not a Democrat, it's not anything. Like the woman that spoke before, my family's been in Luzern County since 1739. 1739 down in Hunlocks Creek, there's Hartman's Road. That's my blood here Luzern County. So like, they fought and died and everything for, to give us our rights. And that means everybody, you know? Like, I get it, people say, a long time ago, they came a long way to vote or whatever. Things have changed. Now we're dealing with monkeypox and what other other pox we're going to have. You defund this and take it away? What are we going to do two years from now when we need it again? Like, an, an emergency. The world is changing. We don't know what we're dealing with day to day. And we all know that. So just leave it the way that it is for now and address it again next year. But I'd love to get more people involved in other situations like the Roads and Bridge Committee. But for the people, I am so proud of everybody that's there tonight. Speak your voice, come out every meeting you can. Have a good night. Thank you.
Peter Olet?
Hello, it's Peter Olet. I'm from Pittston City. Just to begin with, I want to, I want to applaud all those folks that have, uh, are working the polls, uh, who have spoken tonight. We do need more poll workers. I know that because I was vice chairman of the election board and I would, I'm also now a inspector of elections in Pittston City. This ordinance seems to be a solution in certain, in search of a problem. There are no problems with the drop boxes. I would urge council to vote against this, uh, this ordinance. And I would, I, I don't think I can add any more than has already been added by the rest of the public. This is an important way to extend the vote and encourage people to vote. We need to retain them. And in fact, we should expand them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Mark Raivo from Hazelton speaking. This is, you know, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very glad to see all of the county residents coming out to voice either for the drop box or against the drop boxes. Uh, I think it's, it's very healthy and for everyone to come out and voice their, uh, their opinions in our constitutional republic. Therefore, I will, I will have nothing to add more than what I said on the, uh, on the email that I sent to council and the election board, other than to, uh, point out that, as a few people have said, absentee ballots, absentee voting is allowed. It is constitutional. It is encased in state, state law stare decisis. And I encourage every person with a disability, whether it's a veteran or an average citizen, to please use that option to vote. It is under Article VII, Section 14 of our state constitution. That is your right. And I wholeheartedly encourage that right to be exercised to the fullest. That being said, I don't believe that this ordinance, as far as it's, as it's written, can be in this venue. I think the state needs to take this up. I say this because, not only because of what was mentioned previously about litigation and stuff like that, but there's, uh, also litigation in the state Supreme Court as we speak, as well as the US Supreme Court in a North Carolina case when the, when the Supreme Court justices come back from recess. So therefore, there's already litigation out there. But is the county the, the right purview or the right venue to, to deal with this? I say no. Now, I'm against drop boxes. I am very strongly against drop boxes. And as the county sheriff's deputies will tell you, what happened with, uh, the people that came in from New York after this, uh, Governor Cuomo scared them into coming into Hazelton, when the COVID outbreak started, they were shacking up with their relatives. And a lot of those residents had their relatives shacking up with them, got mail-in ballots. Where's, who's to say that they didn't fill out those mail-in ballots? They were camping out in cars and in hotels, for God's sakes. And my mom is immune compromised. And she went to use a mail-in ballot and she was disenfranchised. So I have every right to, to scrutinize mail-in ballots because what transpired in 2020, who's to say it won't happen again? Where people from New York, people from New Jersey won't get scared by their elected officials to come here? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raivo. I have a, a public comment slipped here that I just got from Catherine, but the comment is on the back. Catherine, do you want me to read this? Or do you want to talk? I'll read it if you only choose.
You can go right to the podium.
I just wanted to come up and say that the drop boxes are under 24-hour video surveillance on secured county property. And these boxes and ballots are handled by sheriff's deputies. What counts, what the council is proposing to take away, those safeguards and make the drop boxes less secure. Are we saying that thus we can't trust the law enforcement of Luzern County? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, Elizabeth Sarah, Luzern County Board of Elections. And I just want to clear up a couple misconceptions first and foremost. We are a constitutional republic, not a democracy. Thought I cleared up, up first. Second, they may be under surveillance, but that surveillance is not kept for the correct amount of time, the proper amount of time as prescribed by law and as, well, not by law, I'm sorry, by the state, uh, Department of State Guidance. It is not kept for the proper prescribed amount of time as per the guidance that the state, the guidance that the state puts out. Okay? And we proved that in our last meeting, we had some, one of our board members investigated and they came back with not being able to access the va, the video surveillance from that box. The video surveillance is not kept by Luzern County. It is not put out by Luzern County. The video surveillance is put out by each individual location and it is not retained by Luzern County. We have currently no control over any of the video surveillance on any of the drop boxes. Just wanted to clear that up. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Star. Any other members of the public that wish to speak on the drop box ordinance during public hearing? We have a lot of emails. Mr. Lombardo and I are going to read them. They're all for public comment for this, uh, for the public hearing. If you can start, please.
This one's from Karen Baranowski from Wilkes-Barre City. Dear council members, I have witnessed this fiasco in person attending an April election board meeting where council members in attendance decreed election drop boxes. One person even telling us to watch the debunked 2000 Mules to see the truth, when in fact, that movie used bogus GPS information and uncovered no real fraud. Otherwise, I followed all the news articles about the embarrassingly inept, wasted county council meeting, time spent several meetings on this fake MAGA agenda topic instead of actually necessary county business. Conveniently located drop boxes are very helpful to voters, especially seniors, those with disabilities and working voters with long job hours unable to get out of the county office, to the county office during normal business times and to the polls to vote in person. Our goal in society should be making it easier to vote rather than making extra hoops to jump through. National studies of drop boxes used in many states for years have uncovered no real fraud. Perhaps a husband might add a wife's ballot sensibly allowed in some states anyway. Why would anyone want to cheat anyway? Many drop box opponents claim that people can mail in ballots. The problem is someone might apply for a little, a little late for a no excuse absentee ballot or ballots might be sent from the election office later due to errors, et cetera. Sometimes the mail is slow and the mail ballot does not arrive in time to be counted. What if the timestamp fall, or what if the stamp falls off? Bottom line, if a voter uses a drop box, they know their ballot has been received on time. In the past elections, drop boxes were delivered and retrieved by Luzern County workers in their normal work hours slash duties with county trucks and medical slash disability insurance in case of injuries. I understand we have five drop boxes, which are extremely heavy and would involve paying for truck rental and might cause some civic-minded volunteer to be injured or killed. What logical reason other than to make a political state? Please realize how sacred the process of being able to vote in an American democracy is to everyone. Anything we can do to get every eligible citizen to vote should be the goal of all of our elected officials. Finally, I was happy to see when Carl Venus, one of our wonderful honor society students at Hanover, was elected to the council. I thought to myself, he is a person who will represent us well. Thanks, respectively, Karen Baranowski. Next one is from Nancy Ferdinand. It says, out of cu, out of country or unable to vote due to impairment, only reason not to vote in person, then mail-in ballots ahead of election should be allowed. Let's support the vote. This is from West Poole from Kingston, PA. Voting drop boxes are necessary for full enfranchisement of all citizens. Misguided attempt by certain quote-unquote leaders to ban county workers from handling the boxes, an outrageous attempt to disenfranchise those who need to, need the option to vote quickly and easily. This would undoubtedly cast major difficulties for the, for the disabled, those without reliable transport and many minorities, which is exactly what the followers of the corrupt- which is exactly what the followers of the corrupt and disgraced former president want. This is further fueled by said former president's ongoing lies and about election integrity. This council has better things to do than doing the bidding of an unfit and morally bankrupt cult leader. For example, there are unused American Rescue Plan funds being allocated. Or is this an attempt to avoid giving credit to our current president for making those funds possible? Political corruption and lack of actually serving the public is truly appalling. Do better. This one is from Jerry Notaro. Dear council members, I live in the new 116th district on north side of School Hill County. I am writing to express my opposition to drop boxes under any circumstances by any government agency that does not have the power to write legislation to conduct elections, including elections bureau. I realize this vote is only partial elimination of drop boxes, but I believe fairness and justice demands we take the first step. Drop boxes are controversial and problematic, and we were initially authorized by the state Supreme Court. We know now through legal decisions that this is not in the scope of the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court can't make election laws. That belongs solely to legislature. Drop boxes are not a secure way to vote. We know that there are numerous reports all over the state, including Luzern County, documented reports of voting laws were infringed. It is illegal to drop ballots for other persons without written permission and under certain circumstances. And even that law was violated. Drop boxes are unsecureable and should never be allowed to begin with. This was done reportedly because of the pandemic, but that is long gone. And this should use of unsecureable drop this should and so should the use of unsecureable drop boxes. There are way too many hands handling these ballots this way. I respectfully urge this board to vote to eliminate drop boxes used by third parties or anyone else. Voters demand a secure vote, one man, one vote, not one man, 10 votes for their favorable candidate. This one doesn't have a name. Oh, wait, I like. My name is Lisa Napursky, and I'm a lifelong resident of Luzern County, given a long list of important issues that need to be tackled in our county. It's very disappointing to watch councils spend valuable time on something so frivolous as trying to eliminate the use of drop boxes. This is absolutely no evidence that the drive use of drop boxes in Luzern County over the past few elections had any negative impact on our elections. And there is no practical reason whatsoever to curtail their use. Drop boxes have a proven track record, not just here in Luzern County, but in many other states as well. They have made casting a ballot more convenient while remaining secure and reducing the burden on the postal service and local election officials. I personally know many Luzern County voters who have benefited from the use of drop boxes. For example, seniors and handicapped persons for whom standing in long lines on election day is very difficult. People whose work schedules prevent them from voting on election day, people who have compromised immune systems and prefer not to vote in person for health reasons. These are a they are able to cast their vote directly and do not have to worry about issues with the US Postal Service causing unforeseen delays in returning their ballots. Everyone knows the ordinance before council today is nothing but a thinly veiled scheme to make it harder for people to vote, nothing more. The debate is a huge waste of time, and I have no doubt the vast majority of citizens prefer council to work on legitimate issues of concern rather than wage war on our voting rights. Every eligible citizen of Luzern County should have the ability to cast their ballot safely and with confidence. I urge council to make the voting easier, not more difficult for your constituents. Thank you for your time to hear my concerns. This one is from Dave Massaccura from Wilkes-Barre. The attempt to make voting more difficult by county Republicans partisan nonsense and once again, making life more difficult for working class people. If this Republican led council wants to go on record as having made yet another important facet of our life of county residents, by all means, add it to the growing list of reasons why you're all going to be held accountable next round of elections.
This one's from Rebecca Elfin from Kingston. I am writing to register by disgust that this appeal will see urban efforts to prevent ballot drop boxes being placed. First, he tried to ban them, which is clearly unconstitutional and violate home rules. So now he has proposed this workaround preventing county employees from doing the job of placing them. The council needs to vote down this proposal, one stop catering to this kind of harmful obstructionism fueled by hearsay not evidence calling constitutional voting methods into question creates public confusion, mistrust and anxiety about how people will be able to vote close to an election. Preventing ballot boxes from being placed with disenfranchised people who deal with reduced mobility and disability, people who work long hours and have tight schedules. The council had better spend its time supporting the people's right to vote. Why doesn't it want all people to be able to vote easily? Could it be because it has been wasting time on this kind of nonsense instead of publicizing how to propose ways to use the American Rescue Plan funds up until less than a month before applications are due? Does the council $112 million to be spent only by a small circle of insiders? Does the council wish $112 million to go unclaimed instead of actually doing the work? To use it on things that would make people's lives better, like keeping our hospital open? Do better if people watch and want to vote for you. Your Luzern County council members partisan politics, flawed reasoning, theorized that fueled the conspiracy theory hysteria around mail in ballots and ballot drop boxes. It is embarrassing that the Luzern County Council has succumbed to this irrational voter fraud frenzy, dedicating an obscene amount of time and public resources to a non existent problem that needs no solution. You appear as petulant children, sticking fingers in your ears and voicing, wah wah wah, I'm not listening. I can do as I want. And straight jacketing the utilization of drop boxes, you are disenfranchising featureatic voters committed to participating in our system of government. Consider the impact this has on individuals who do not have the time, health, resources, transportation, freedoms available to others who are essentially eliminating their choices to vote. Who are some of these features? A single parent who works a 10 hour shift and picks their children fix fixes dinner, helps with homework and literally had no time left to access a polling location. The nurse who works a double shift and is so dedicated to preserving the health of others that they have no idea that it is also election day. The teamster who missed too many elections because they thought they would make it back in time. The dyslexic troubled by the amount of time it took to decipher and mark a ballot or use the voting machine. There is urgent county work you should be prioritizing. Quit wasting time crafting measures to restrict voting access. From Claudia Glennon of Salem Township. One Joseph Schaper. I don't know where he's from. No, Mark Schaper's school. I'm writing to express my strong support for mail in ballots and drop boxes. Drop boxes are a safe and secure option for many Luzern County voters. Putting it in the mail by putting up the flag, putting up the flag as someone suggested is as insecure as it can be. Once you put it in the mailbox, it may sit there for hours for it's picked up. I prefer taking my ballot to the drop box and knowing it's going to be counted. This is no county employees. This no, yeah, this is no county employees can be used to transport ballots is absolute nonsense and is nothing less than an attempt to suppress Democratic vote. Republican state legislature passed the bill for mail in ballots because they thought it would help them win. When it turned out that most mail in ballots were from Democrats, Republican Party suddenly opposed them. This proposed action is nothing but politics and is disgraceful. Again, drop boxes are safe and secure. No one has given evidence to the contrary. By the way, someone's feelings are not evidence. Thank you. And please read this as the council meeting, Joseph Schaper.
This one is from Carol Sheer. Members of Luzern County Council, I submit this email to you in reference to both the council ordinance hearing and regular meetings we held tonight, August 22, 2022, and formally request to be right prior to the voting of both the ordinance hearing and general meeting. I ask Luzern County to reject the proposed ordinance restricting the use of drop boxes. Decisions to implement and manage the use of drop boxes is deferred view of the elections board, which is a nonpartisan entity focused on the needs of the citizens. The county council is a partisan political body that does not have the authority under Luzern County Home Rule Charter to issue an ordinance governing the administration of an election. Council members have not relied on official procedure to justify their actions. By passing the proposed ordinance, council creates voter confusion and potentially violates the civil rights of citizens. We are less than three months out from the date of the general election. Enacting this ordinance now would invariably run afoul of federal law which prohibits such election changes so late in the cycle. The end result would be litigation, creating a huge waste of your fellow taxpayers' hard earned money and for what? Nothing more than clearly partisan political theater and overreach. Some on council have argued that they are not banning drop boxes, rather they are seeking to prohibit their placement on county property or other handling by paid employees of the county. So your proposed legal workaround appears to be to ban and any county employee from placing, moving, installing, deinstalling a drop box and or placing one on county property. If the ordinance passes and found to be illegal theoretically, a sheriff's deputy could still collect the ballots from a drop box, but could be fired as a county employee replacing or removing the drop box at a specific location. If this issue is about security, then this makes no logical sense. If council is concerned about securing drop boxes, why not seek to create conditions that place their location and supervision outside the control of county government, including their own authority? I am disgusted by the amount of time and effort that has been spent on this just this one manufactured issue in the 2020 ride spread. Rumors of voter fraud turned out to be a nothing burger. These this appears to be more of the same diversion of time and effort from legitimate county business. Your constituents would better serve to be spent more of council's time. One, tackling local infrastructure issues and flood management. Two, allocating unspent COVID-19 relief funds to local businesses and communities who desperately need them to counteract the economic effects of the pandemic. Three, preventing the elimination of local essential services such as EMS and police due to underfunding. I'm a voter and I support the ability of all citizens to use drop boxes. The ability to utilize one to assure my vote is counted and has served me well when I found it necessary to be out of the area on election day to deal with family issues, placing my ballot in a drop box prior to the election before I left the area. It served those who work seven to seven on election day. It serves many others whom you may not even know or care to find out about. The ability to procure and use mail in voting via drop boxes should be a right, not a challenge. The county council must reject this ordinance and protect the voting rights of every citizen by keeping drop boxes accessible throughout the county.
This is from Tony Thomas, Wilkes-Barre. Dear council, I'm asking I'm writing you to ask you to vote against this ridiculous amendment. Republicans voted for Act 77 and had no issues with mail in voting until Trump made it an issue of use. People who's in county Donald Trump, Urban Hall, Mitch Thornton and the rest are exposing the taxpayers lawsuits with this stunt. I thought that they ran on being justly responsible. Please vote now sincerely, Tony. That is the end of the email. Any other members of the public that wish to speak on this?
Say your name and the municipality you're writing, please. Kinne and Groshuk, Salem Township. What's your last name? Groshuk, G R O S H U K. Thank you. Thanks. All right, just to recap, just because I was just sitting here listening to everyone talk and I did a tally. Did you guys do a tally of like all the constituents that came and talked? So there's a strong 83% that want you to keep the ballot boxes. And am I correct in assuming that you guys are supposed to be representing these constituents that came and spoke? So to me, I mean, the vote really should be left in the voter's hands, right? So it doesn't matter what your personal agenda is, what political party affiliation you have. You heard the voices of Luzern County that came out and spoke. So if we go by that, it's really, I mean, staggering the amount of people that want to keep them. And the reasons that they have, I mean, they're very legitimate. I mean, we're talking about legal litigation. We're talking about your disenfranchised demographic coming out and speaking about physical disabilities, the fact that they're working several jobs. Working class is very loud in here. So I'm just assuming that you guys are taking this all in and that we're not just going to do this based on what the one gentleman had said that he put very well about confirmation bias, where we want something to be true so much that we chase after the evidence that backs up what we believe. So if we put all parties aside and we just look at the science of like voting and taking any kind of like merit into our voters, we would say they don't want us to take away the ballot boxes regardless. Because at the end of the day, as politicians, you're just a vessel to voters. Your personal opinion and perspectives should really be put aside. I mean, isn't that what a good politician does? They vessel that, right? You just channel that. I mean, so that's really all I have to say is to please take that into consideration with all your voters. They came out, they spoke, they were uncomfortable. They didn't want to be here, but they did it enough because they're passionate about this particular policy. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin?
Let me first of all. Let me let me just first of all state that I want to clear you at no time that I state that I wanted to ban the boxes. This isn't about banning it because it's not in our county council lane. That is the intent. It's basically obviously to make it a little bit more difficult to get boxes out. Yes, that's true.
Obstruction.
It's not obstruction. This isn't about easy and convenient for some, but it's also about fairness and security for all. Be wide, safe and confident with elections. I've already offered to have a group of people from the election board and executive branch and like to put a bipartisan or bi sort of lateral commission together so we can talk about these issues. Because what transpires in this county, it takes 17 people to run elections, whereas in other counties it takes three, which is the Board of Commissioners. They double up as the Board of Elections in their respective counties. In other counties where they have home rule, there's members of the legislature or legislative board that sit on the Board of Elections. You know, there's there's a lot more issues than just these boxes from a budgetary perspective. You know, there's powers and duties that the Board of Elections has. Excuse me, I'm talking, okay? First of all, security cameras. We don't own all the cameras that are actually on these boxes or supposedly on these boxes. There's five drop boxes around the county. You want to make it fair and secure for everybody, do all 76 municipalities in this county, okay? Put security cameras that the county can actually have footage for on. Okay. The security footage right now might be at some public libraries cameras. We don't have access to this camera. You know, when the Board of Elections chose to put these ballot boxes out there, they put them out, they went out of plan, without a security plan. You know, and and it's great to have this conversation and dialogue, but the public has, you know, I mean, I'm hearing all these things. Security camera footage was promised by the former county manager that we would have access to those cameras. But that didn't happen. You know, that doesn't make our elections more secure. It doesn't give the other side more confidence in our election process. The post office, they always had mailbags at the local post office that you could take your ballot to. That did not go through the sorting center process. And actually, those bags were dropped. You go to Wilkes-Barre Post Office, they're telling me why I have a ballot, they need to go to the county courthouse. Those ballots went in the bag, the bag came directly to the courthouse. They didn't go through the sorting process through the normal means and the normal channels. There's a shortage of employees that work in the bureau. You know, where they obviously were contented with about seven issues. And it were ballot proofing mistakes, ballot mistakes, there's a person out in the audience who was a subject. She went out petition to be put on a ballot, but put the wrong district in. To this day, she's not able to serve on the committee because the election bureau made a mistake. And there was no reparations for her. She's not able to serve in a public capacity because the bureau made that creating mistake. She got elected in the wrong order. And then the committee decided not to make her a part of public talks. We as elected officials are residents too, we're sworn to protect the sanctity and sensibility of the Constitution to save us. No one is preventing anyone to get a ballot. It doesn't, you know, prevent one from receiving it, from studying ballot. So, you know, if you're an absentee ballot, if you're mail in ballots, I'm not asking for that stuff. So you take the time, learn your candidates, learn about, get to know them. But I, Max, are stubborn, too. I want the truth to be told. One person said, you know, we saved $2,014 on postage, but how much overtime did we actually waste on having members of staff go out and collect these ballots? Probably a lot more overtime to pay out the postage. You know, maybe we should go and visit putting a postage paid, you know, postage meter stamp on the ballots. State law does have provisions for drop boxes and judges don't have law. They interpret law. And when the Pennsylvania's majority in the Supreme Court is obviously partisan, they're Democrats. They went and they said, okay, counties can choose whether or not county boards of elections can choose whether or not they want to use drop boxes. That's really not a fair process. It doesn't sort of meet the standard of that's the constitution as far as uniform elections, uniformity. You want fairness. It's all about uniformity and law. And imagine you're a candidate in Lackawanna County, Luzern County uses drop boxes, but that Lackawanna County or that Lackawanna candidate, maybe they're a state rep candidate cross county lines. There's drop boxes used here in Luzern County that know drop boxes in Lackawanna County, maybe not in Rhode. You know, because people have voted in like districts. There's that gives somebody an edge. And I mean, you have to look at these things pragmatically from a different perspective. You can shake your head, but.
Well, no, I mean, we're. Miss Groshuk, Miss Groshuk, we can't.
Looking at you, but you know, I'm not speaking to the audience. You know, so drop boxes being utilized in one county and maybe not two other counties from an animated perspective is not guaranteed to those candidates that run for those offices. Okay. Because you have 67 counties in Pennsylvania, half of them use them. You basically have an individual county election in all 67 counties. The entire Commonwealth process is not uniform. It's not. Different hours at different locations.
We're not letting you worry about other counties. Guys, members of the public, I apologize. You can't interrupt council members. You could speak your own public comment.
There are. There are different hours and locations, which, okay, yes, people have jobs. I have four jobs. I make it to the polls just fine. Three of my jobs are W two jobs. So I make it to the poll just fine. Polls are open from seven a.m. to eight p.m., not seven to seven like somebody else has stated, somebody clear year on those times. Having different hours at different locations is not equal protection. It's not fair. Because maybe the person at Pittston takes it to the poll in a certain block of hours where maybe the person basically cannot, a working person. So if you want fairness, let's let's ask for fairness and have the Board of Elections go and ask those entities that they partner with to have the same set of hours everywhere. Not not different hours, because that way people in Eskapack or Sugarloaf can vote just just as fine as people in Wilkes-Barre. You know, there's always been an absentee process in place for voters. My grandmother utilized this. She's 92 years old. She has two replacement knees and a replacement hip. She has two replacement knees and a replacement hip. She gets a ballot in the mail and she sends it back and it gets here just fine. You know, I think voter suppression, quite honestly, happens when mistakes are made at the Bureau level. When you have mistakes on a ballot, like instead of like vote for two, instead of vote for three. When they go and make a mistake on the voting issue, it's a Democratic ballot. Really, it's all Republican. I mean, these people are in the office, they have a lot of great responsibilities. They need to sit in the office and prove for you those ballots first. We don't even have good ballots going out to the voters. And putting them in the drop box is useless and senseless because we're going to have to go back and fix those ballots. Resend, you know, more mail out, cost more money because they made those mistakes. You know, quite honestly, yes, you know, there are going to be always people that say, well, you're going to cause legal consequences. You might cause a lawsuit. Well, anybody that's in a legislator's role has to create something from nothing, okay? We were very thoughtful and methodical as far as what we create as far as ordinance. As you can shake your head all you want, but you don't want to hear what I'm trying to say. Out of fairness.
Mr. Urban, she can't rebuttal. It's not public comment, so please stop addressing her directly.
Yeah, I didn't say her name. So, you know, equal protections, like I said, if you want fairness, then lobby for all seventy-six municipalities. Lobby for all the same time, so everybody in all seventy-six municipalities can vote at the same time. You know, that's fairness. Fairness is also putting security cameras on. You can say you can't prove fraud. Exactly. We can't prove it because we don't have the video footage, because we don't, we can't even get camera footage. The guidance by the Department of State says sixty days that we're supposed to hold on to it after the certification of election. We don't have that footage. So if we wanted to prove it, we couldn't. People that are saying, I mean, one poller said, well, they're taking their relative ballot with the box while hoping that person had a permission slip. Even our own governor in this Commonwealth took his wife's ballot and committed a crime. Because the law says you can only take your ballot or someone else's ballot as long as you fill out, you know, what appears to be an affidavit. There isn't an official form for that. It's one person with one ballot. And that's the way it should work. I mean, Vicki outside the box, she spoke to Jen Andrews today on the phone and said, you know, this type of issue makes me almost want to put in a patent to change the way a drop box is made, where it has an actual heater that has a barcode reader on it and some type of memory, where you can only stuff one ballot in at a time and then have a pinhole camera right at the ballot box. It takes your picture and assigns it to your outer envelope. That way, if you do decide to put in more than one, you know, your picture's on multiple outer envelopes. And then we can actually prove the fraud then at that point in time. So maybe I'll, you know, consider that an idea. But to sit here and hear the same thing, so, you know, I don't see anybody else offering any solution. Now, like I said, I would be willing to sit down with the Board of Elections, with the county manager, come up with a better process. You know, but right now, the process isn't fair. It isn't completely one hundred percent secure. And you can't say that there isn't fraud going on. Well, you can't be, well, you can, because we don't have the proof of the camera footage right now because it doesn't exist and we don't have access to it.
Speculation.
It's speculative, but we don't have access.
Please stop arguing with members of the public.
So either way, we don't have access to the footage. And I would hope that you would want people to have access to some type of footage if you want security. If you believe in security, you would want camera footage that we can actually then prove for disprove. But right now, it doesn't exist. So until we get there, I think it's a flawed process. The only way that, you know, the intent is not to ban the boxes. If you want to expand it, we'll talk about expanding it, but let's do it the right way. I mean, I think Board of Elections put the cart before the horse when they voted for it because they didn't think the entire process through. They voted on the process, but didn't think about security. They didn't think about people, they didn't educate the public that you can only take your own, you know, and if you do take someone else's, it's a lot of paper with their signature on it. And like I said, you know, it's not about, it's all about uniformity. You want fairness, the election process has to be fair for all, not just the select group of people. It has to be fair for everyone, it has to be secure for everyone. You know, and like I said, having different hours alone is not fair for citizens. So, you know, we can talk about those issues, but, you know, I think, you know, we should start up another forum for this. If this, whether this gets passed or should, you know, shot down tonight, that's on us. The dialogue still happens with the public came out and, you know, before against me. But at least I'm talking about the issue. At least I was able to bring up the public to talk about a controversial issue. And that's true leadership, you know? And even though it took time and it's taken a lot of time to discuss this, at least everybody in the public are starting to get the facts. And the facts are that we aren't totally secure. We don't have consistency in hours, placement. You know, we want the boxes. Let's talk about seventy-six municipalities. But at least let's talk about fairness now. And I think, you know, as a leader of the Democratic Party and myself as a leader of the Republican Party, we can compromise on that. You know, it doesn't have to be difficult, but we might make sure that there's no fraud. We want to ensure that everybody accesses these things at the same time throughout all seventy-six municipalities. So, you know, and you don't know what my true intent is unless you speak. If you want to ask me questions after, that's fine, I'm always available for people. But, you know, stay engaged, stay informed and.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. There's another member of the public on here with their hand up, Vivian. Vivian? Any other members of the public that wish to speak on this order? Motion to adjourn.
I have one comment.
Okay.
I truly want to applaud Ms. Bozinski for doing a reach out today. We were posting on Facebook and urging the public to show up tonight and call in on the phone because you were very successful and you're probably the most successful Democrat chairman in the state, I would say, for doing that. So, but having said that, I just want to rebut the one statement that one person made here and said, based on the feedback tonight, us councilmen should vote based on the eighty percent feedback one way. I got to tell you, the last three or four days, my phone lighting up with hundreds of emails saying the other way. They just didn't come here because we didn't put a call arm out there to come and show up. But I truly, phone never stopped. I had it silenced several nights during my sleep, but it was going both ways. The one other thing I want to comment on is I never accepted the notion that disabled people and handicapped people could make it to a drop box, but they can't make it to a mailbox. And I never accepted the notion that drop boxes are infinitely more secure than a mailbox. I just, people could argue with me for ten years on that. I don't see the evidence of that. We voted over a hundred years. We voted over a hundred years with absentee ballots in this state. And I hardly ever complained. And it was never this wide speculation that many of those ballots were never getting counted. I mean, you know they're counted because you're still on the voting rolls the next election comes around. So I never accepted that. And I also don't accept, I don't understand why, if it's really hard to vote and you can't get out because your busy schedule, your work schedule, geez, at three or four in the morning, open your front door and put a ballot in your mailbox, no matter what. And that's what I say the solution to that is.
Courtney.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vivian.
Okay, can you hear me?
There's an echo and a.
Okay, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we could. Just state where your last name and the municipality.
My name is Vivian Kreidler-Lessina. I live in Escapack, D.A. I did send you an email, but evidently you used it and received it, or it was received too late. So here's what I had sent you. I'm writing to you because of my concern with the drop boxes. I am against them. According to the Luzerne County Home Rule, Section 104, Right Reserved to the People. It states, "Rights reserved to the people, no provision of this charter and no action by the Luzerne County elective official where employee of Luzerne County acting under its authority shall infringe upon the rights, privileges, and powers reserved to or guaranteed Constitution of the United States for the Constitution of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Nowhere in the Constitution of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, does it state that the county of Luzerne and other counties are to employ or contract a company to handle or move voting drop boxes. Luzerne County needs to implement this ordinance prohibiting county employees or contractors or any many member of a county committee from handling or transporting drop boxes. By implementing this order, it also prevents Luzerne County from being held liable for the damage of drop boxes and/or liability of injured county employees or contractors or a committee member." So I asked Luzerne County to vote yes on this ordinance to prohibit employees, contractors, from handling the transport drop boxes. I also asked that Luzerne County Council include any and all committee members of any committee of Luzerne County to this ordinance. Also, I'd like to say, I understand that the election board had applied for and received and is eligible for a grant through the state. Let them use their own money to move these drop boxes, okay? But I don't think Luzerne County Council should be paying to have the taxpayers' dollars to move these drop boxes. There's nothing wrong with absentee ballots. If you're disabled or an elderly, all you need to do is get a one-time letter from your doctor, and that's lifetime. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Extension, applause. Public hearing is adjourned. It's seven thirty-nine.
Recording stopped.
Oh, yeah. Oops.
I am.
Thank you.
Oh, it's good to see you. I know that Samuel asked about.
She's a dear. I have a.
They're going to get to you at five in the morning, you know that.
Millions of dollars.
I do know.
And the worst part about it is you're so highly, you're.
You're not, maybe all of them.
Do you know what the word for this stuff? I have. Don't worry. Okay, so I put that out.
Nation is, I mean, one. And you are.
Really.
Well. But it works. It, you know.
Hey, what's up? How are you?
How are you?
Okay. Lynette, how are you?
Good.
Stay away from that guy. He's a problem. Oh, I know. That is Mary, Mary Malone.
Yeah.
Nice lady. Man. Yeah, she's at.
I don't know.
So. Power out of spring jam. Yeah. Is there an ID in Carson? Everybody is.
Red. You mind?
Two, three, nine. I mean, you're welcome.
You know, it's hard.
Before a T, I told you. Says. It's a little. DM right there. Well, one person at the end. The state, and that's what Becky said to me the other day. They've said, we want you to sort of move that, have these ballots. No more. You can't do that. That's the question. You can't do that.
Is that a forty-five minute?
You don't have to.
We can answer a question.
Well. It's. Somebody as well.
I pledge allegiance. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Pro-councilor? Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. Dermott? Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Rado?
Here.
Any deletions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move item five to the work session under section six point zero nine, purchasing procedures. It's in excess of twenty-five thousand RFP for that.
Okay, there's a motion to move number five to work session. Wait a second.
Section.
Pro-councilor?
Question?
Yeah.
This is from the county manager, Mr. Rockerson. Can you dive into this a little bit and tell us why it's on the voting agenda for today? And there's like a sense of urgency or anything about that that we can?
Thank you, Vice Chair. And maybe while we do that, Mr. McBride, maybe you can position yourself up, right? She can speak more intelligently and eloquently coupled with possibly Mr. Skeen. But it's my understanding.
We can't speak to it. I don't believe we can speak to it yet because if there's a motion. I don't believe we can speak to it yet because if there's a motion to move it, so we cannot speak to it right now.
I can't speak.
No, there's a, if it, if it stays on the agenda, you, you guys can speak to it. But this motion is to move it. The agenda has not been adopted, so we can't speak on a vote. So this is to move it from the voting to the work session. There's a motion and there's a second, unfortunately, but we can't have comments on that. Roll call. Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Losgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
No.
Mr. McDermott.
Well.
Mr. McGinley.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
No.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
No.
Seven yes, excuse me, six yes, five no. It's moved.
What was the tally?
Six yes, five no.
Okay, thank you.
Six to move it. Any other deletions? You have a motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed. The agenda is adopted. Two public comments here that I'm gonna read into the record. They're just short emails on agenda items. One's on the agenda item. Number two. Luzern County Councilors fifty-one million and fifty-four million for Luzern County infrastructure project. No, make no mistake, the push for this bridge is for the proposed Nacerro gas to gasoline plant and commercial company already receiving billions of dollars in tax subsidies so they can make money and receive one fall profit while ripping off we the people at the pump. There have been no feasibility environmental impact or geological survey studies done, so this proposed plant is currently fiction. Senator Udecheck was quoted in a Times Leader article. I'm in constant contact with Nacerro and they're also communicating with municipal and community leaders. There have been no public briefings, no informational sessions. New Court Township has stated they have not received information or updates from Nacerro, so is there exactly are they communicating? Vote no. Claudia's running, Kalam County. Next is from, oh, well, this item was removed from the agenda, so. Any members of the House that wish to speak on agenda items only?
Madam Chair, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regards to number two, item number two on the agenda, I just want to make it clear, and I hope you can clarify it for the public, that this is the ordinance that's being voted on is only for, to move the process forward and not, not set in stone with regards to the projects that are the, the actual West Nanicoke, Nanicoke Bridge project until the final, until the final approval by the state, the Commonwealth Finance Authority as our bond counsel, Mr. Kozelowski said at the last meeting. So I just hope you expound upon that to clarify that for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raabo. I'm Mr. Shaker.
I'd like to also speak on agenda item number two. That as Claudia, I believe it was, in her message said, this is obviously for the bridge that's solely for use of the Nacerro plant. There's no other reason for this bridge to exist. This project, approving this bridge in particular, is the worst example of a bridge to nowhere. This is government funding to build a bridge solely for one plant that, as has been pointed out, likely won't ever happen. They haven't done any of the studies. They haven't gotten all the funding lined up. They're in no way ready to build this plant, and we're already incurring debt just to build a plant that's gonna make a ton of money, pollute our local environment, and might not even happen. There's concerns about the safety of the site, so I don't see any reason to support building a bridge purely for the benefit of one oil company that will not benefit the community at large. Luzern County has some disastrous bridges, some terrible roads. Anyone who's ever, knows anyone who lives out of the area that comes to visit, the first thing they say is, God, your roads are terrible. And the fact that you're using, gonna use county money to build a bridge to nowhere to benefit an oil company is pretty disappointing. So I hope you'll vote against this. The Nacerro plant should not go forward, and you shouldn't be spending taxpayer money just to benefit one oil company.
Hi, Elizabeth Hartman. Hanover Township, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hartman.
Hi, I'd like to briefly touch on agenda item, I believe it's for, I'm sorry, I had a family emergency, so I had to leave home, so I don't have my screen in front of me. It's a settlement that you are gonna vote on today, and it looks like a litigant was a pro se and it started a couple of years ago. It seemed like he was in the county jail, and he started pro se, which is representing himself, and took it all the way up. And now, like, something about the jail, which I'm not quite sure what happened, even reading all the details. But how much is that settlement for? Is there a number to that, or is it secret? Agenda item number four, anybody?
Six thousand five hundred.
Okay, so I just want to take that and let you all know. You saw the judgment that just came down last week from the Chivarella case, how they're going after now the judges, and that's something that before, everybody used to have immunity. And I was one of the mothers way back when, when my autistic son was sent away, that brought everybody in to investigate. I was also one of the mothers with the same child that brought everybody in to check out children and youth. The numbers that these children from this judge are getting from judges, everybody needs to understand, you are all responsible. Like, there's no more immunity. If you know that something bad's going on somewhere and you're not speaking up, like, the immunity is gonna go away. Von Swann lost her pension. Like, this one here, why, like, apparently the county is paying him off six thousand some dollars to get rid of the guy because he keeps on refiling. Well, maybe we need him to help us with, with family courts and children and youth. But, like, I'm like, this is ridiculous. He's been fighting five years for six thousand five hundred dollars for, I don't even know what the heck happened to the poor guy, but we're gonna pay him off. Now, who's gonna pay off these kids? There's one girl, she was locked up for five years. She's due a half a million dollars, a thousand dollars a day. Who's gonna pay that to her? Her life is screwed up. The trauma that he inflicted on all the children. I'm telling you, like, I'm so proud of all the citizens that are there today. Please get involved in other things, other than ballot boxes, because they're trying to take the focus off of other things. Okay? We're getting our roads and our bridges fixed and stuff, but come on, think about the kids of this county. They're getting screwed again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any other members of the public on agenda items? Mrs. Saro?
Um, just a number six. I just wanted to say, I know this is just formality. The ordinance to seven oh one A one issuance of electronic equipment, I just wanted to tell Council how much I really appreciate the, this piece of legislation. It is a little piece of legislation, but it helps me to be able to do my job on the board and future people that come onto the board. It really, really helps, and I wanted to thank you all for that. I know it's kind of like doing it backwards, but I just wanted to thank you guys for putting this on here and for getting us computers because mine died earlier in the year, and I haven't been able to replace it. So you guys doing this was really important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saro. Any other members of the public? We're gonna move on to the first agenda item, the motion to approve the minutes of the August.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three long-range operational fiscal and capital plan.
Show move. Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Corvus, second by Mr. Lombardo. Roll call.
Have a question, one second. Two million dollars in surplus into that operational plant. Just wanna make sure, where is that located?
Mr. Crass, do you want to add something?
Sure, so that two million dollars is in unassigned, it's not assigned to any project. So the transfer went from the audit surplus to unassigned, so it can be used for any future capital project. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Crass. Any other questions? Roll call, two in a second. Roll call. Mr. Losgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yeah.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. And we're sure motion to introduce ordinance authorizing improvement of project as a redevelopment authority of the county of Luzern, authorizing and directing the incurrence of lease rental debt in the aggregate principal amount metrics each fifty-five million dollars.
Show move. Second.
Roll call.
One other question.
Sure.
I just wanted a comment to allay the fears of the young man spoke a few minutes ago on this. One, one is, we're not spending taxpayer money if it does go to this bridge and if county ultimately approves this. It's LSA money, which is the gambling money from the casinos in the state. The casinos had to give a large amount of money over to the state, and then the state legislature on it gives it out to counties such as ours. So it's not as if we're taking taxpayer money from the county residents. Also, we held extensive, long meetings on this issue about the bridge a couple of months ago, and I pointedly asked a specific question to this state official that was here, Senator Udecheck, and to others. According to the first responders on both sides of the river around that bridge, I asked the question, if there was no such thing as Nacerro, there was no such thing in the world as that name or company, and there was no actual talks of bringing them here, would that bridge still be necessary, or could we just use the Route twenty-nine bridge? They said that bridge would absolutely need to be replaced for emergency vehicles going back and forth, serving the local communities on both sides. That was their opinion. I'm going with that. That's what they told us. That's all I wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Horne.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
Mr. Corvus said was very important. Like you said, we have extensive discussions and meetings. School people, they bust over that bridge. Taxes are educational. But the big thing, Nacerro, that happens, that, that might be great for the area, but we need that bridge, and we need it because of the citizens that we serve, not because of Nacerro. That's a possibility out there, but there's no guarantee. But we need that bridge to serve the people who live in that area. You know, talking about the bridges in West Pittston and Pittson, and I agree, we need to do something there. We have to work on this stuff. This is important infrastructure for the county. And here's an opportunity to support and point it out. The money's coming from the gambling side, so it's not directly from the taxpayer dollars that they charge in taxes. But we need to have that bridge in place for those people in that area so that all the services that they need, education, first responders, whatever it may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley and Mr. Corvus. Oh, Mr. Lovett, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment. We actually held our Strategic Initiatives Committee meeting last week, and it was brought up that the bridge is possibility qualifier of the five percent match, just like the West Pittston Bridge. If that were the case, I'd be more than happy to use the five percent match and use it, the rest of it on county roads, which serve the whole county, not just a strategic community, a tiny little community. Trust me, I'm from the Hanover area. I know what it's like over there, and I just feel that we should be representing the county as a whole, not just one specific community. I think that fifty-five million can go a long way if we can diversify a little more. That's all that I have.
Mr. Corvus, if you get that deal from the state, sign us up.
Absolutely.
The reality is, we have to do something. It's not a small community down, Nanicoke, West Nanicoke, down the river, up the river. There's more than West Nanicoke to use that bridge. And we have an obligation, we have an obligation for the roads, I agree. And we have to start working on those obligations. This is something we have to do, so we have money, hopefully, to work on some of those obligations.
And I agree, and it also says right in there, and/or such other, so the bridge may not be included. Thank you.
I do have to, you know, add to my colleague's sentiments about the five percent match. I mean, I'm hoping that county would do its diligence to go after it and see, you know, maybe a five percent action bridge instead of the entire fifty million dollars to go for the project. It's a little hard to stomach because we know factually that there's twenty-five percent less traffic on this previous study. So there are less cars going over, less vehicles going over. That's a big price tag for less vehicles. You know, I mean, it's expensive capital. Maybe we could look at maybe a smaller bridge that has heavier weight limits, just for fire apparatus, emergency services, and school buses. Really gonna have to do our diligence on that. That's one I should probably make a vote for, is the ordinance that's rich. We have reservations about Nacerro product. Knowing that there's less traffic on that bridge, it's like throwing good money after something that could be shipped to other projects.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Do you have a motion and a second? We roll call him, please. Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
No.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Losgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number three, motion to adopt resolution approving the dedication for public use for the portion of County Road thirty, also known as Mountain Drive, to the township of Sugar Road. Okay. Who was this? Okay, Mr. Lovett and then Mr. McGinley, I think?
Yeah.
Okay. Your first and a second, roll call. Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Losgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Could I make a quick comment on that, sir?
Yes.
This is something pending the road over to Sugar Road. It's been gone for over two years. They, as a municipality, made agreement with the county, if we brought the road up to the standard that Sugar, they would set the road and dip over the maintenance. That's something we offer to all municipalities across the county. I think the offer still would be open if somebody's very interested, because it relieves us of responsibility of six or eight, ten miles of road. And they're out there, it's easier for them to maintain than for us to send us approval from our engineering officer, road and bridge office. So I thank Sugar Road County, who are going through all their agreement, but certainly benefits the county and their presence.
Yes, this is great. Number four, motion to adopt resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Michael Rivera and Mark Kovich, Luzern County.
Show move. Second.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Losgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
So the new number five, motion to adopt ordinance amending administrative code at section seven point zero one A by adding section seven point zero one A one issuance of electronic equipment.
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Losgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
I'll be, yes, right, make a good mention.
Radel.
Yeah.
Yeah. Number seven, motion to adopt ordinance amending the administrative code adding section seven point zero three A, prohibition seven point zero three A one, election drop boxes, seven point zero three A two, automatic section repealer of seven point zero three A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Our question.
I have a question. Go ahead.
Hi, Ms. McDermott.
Okay, thank you. I said it in the last meeting, but I am against the drop boxes, but I believe the way that we voted for many years worked. And absentee ballots have been successful. However, we have the drop boxes and council does not have the authority to eliminate them. I ran on being fiscally conservative and spending taxpayers' money on lawsuits is not being fiscally responsible. I'm not in favor of spending at least $100,000 on lawsuits. If we don't have employees moving the drop boxes, then who will? I mean, us letting just anyone move them is not secure or responsible. I urge the voters to go to the election board and let them know if you don't want drop boxes. They are the ones who can eliminate them. Thank you.
And I'm gonna voice reiterate what I said last night, two weeks ago. For drop boxes to exist here in this county, it's really a voluntary and discretionary effort by our election board. It is not mandated by state law. And as such, I don't see how county council could be compelled in a lawsuit, a judge, to use taxpayer money on something, an endeavor, that's completely voluntary and discretionary. Doesn't need to happen. Why are we forced to use taxpayer money to do it? So that's my take on any possible litigation. I'm not saying a judge couldn't rule against us, but when the judicial branch gets involved in elected leaders of any jurisdiction and forces them to spend taxpayer money on a political football that's completely voluntary in nature, I think that would really regress pretty far down as a society. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Mr. Horne. Ms. McGinley.
I have a couple items I'd like to mention. Number one, I believe it's the county's responsibility to make sure we have a fair, honest, integrity kind of election. And by removing the county from the bottom of moving boxes, I think it's totally in regard to that particular obligation. Number two, I believe moving the boxes, picking them up, bringing them in, whatever it might be, that's day-to-day operation. And I believe that lies with the manager's office. And I don't think we should infringe on theirs. As far as the election board, as the charter is pointing out, that's an independent body. They have the responsibility to make that decision. If we get involved, we're gonna cause issues with that board. And it's not gonna be very kind of an issue. Litigation? Many people weren't here. They're seated around the table tonight. But we had litigation involvement with the DA's election. Ms. Rado remembers very well because she chaired that committee. I think the total litigation cost was over $130,000. And we got no answer. We got no answer. So that was money that was spent with no result. Number two, or last, this does not eliminate drop boxes. This does not eliminate drop boxes. It's difficult to get an option, maybe, but it doesn't eliminate. People wanna talk about eliminating drop boxes. That's a whole different question that can be discussed, debated, whatever it may be, and then brought forward. But it does not eliminate drop boxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley.
Um, so, sorry, did somebody else? Um, so obviously, I've made a number of statements here saying how vehemently opposed I am to drop boxes and to the idea of them. I think that Act 77 is a terrible voting law that should be repealed. And, you know, unfortunately, the best way for us to do that outside of what we can do on this municipal level is to elect a new governor. And outside of my role here on Luzerne County Council, I've been using my political role in life to help elect new elected officials who will ban these drop boxes and who will help to secure our elections with the need to be done. You know, I, we've sat here and we've listened to the last couple of meetings, you know, on both sides. Sometimes very angrily, the public will talk to us about how they feel about the drop boxes. You know, when I hear the Democrat argument, sometimes I'm just nauseated by them because they claim that there's no fraud, there's no breaking of the law. When right here in Luzerne County, our own elections director witnessed it. You know, maybe it was a mistake, maybe it wasn't. I mean, we heard our own governor did the exact same thing. So at the very, very least, there's a misunderstanding of the law. And, you know, so it's going on and, and we don't have the proper security for the drop boxes that we need right now. However, I'm also disappointed in my Republican friends who are giving us a misunderstanding of what this ordinance does. There's a lot of people that have come up here and said that, you know, we're doing the right thing by banning the use of the drop boxes. We're not banning the use of the drop boxes. We're banning one very tiny little infinitesimal portion of the use of the drop box. The sheriff's deputies will still have to go and collect the ballots. And, you know, if the elections board manages to get them where they want them to go, they will still be there. And as of right now, we don't have the proper security measures. And I lay that blame squarely on the elections board, particularly Ms. Williams. And I think that the proper venue for us to be talking about this is the, is the elections board. You know, passing this piece of legislation, which I have from the beginning said is a bad piece of legislation, is not going to do anything. And, and, you know, I'm disappointed that up until this point, we haven't had any conversation about changing it or making any type of alterations to it. So at this point, I'm going to go on.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, in the past several weeks, I've been giving this a lot of thought. I try to look at it objectively. I believe the former absentee system was very popular, used without complaint for many years. But right now, we find ourselves at the mercy of the state because they control how elections are conducted. But PA Supreme Court did legislate from the bench. They went beyond its purview when the majority decided it will now be up to individual counties to implement the use of drop boxes. But the framers of Luzerne County Home Rule Charter designed the elections process to be as apolitical as possible. And that the ultimate authority of administering elections rests with the Board of Elections. The Board has the sole authority to determine if drop boxes will be used in the county. And if council passes this ordinance, this body would also be going on. It's a almost purview for interfering with the elections process. And furthermore, the ordinance does not ban drop boxes. Add to that the potential liability injury to volunteers or expensive legal bills stemming from lawsuits with the Board of Elections. So if it passes, you still have boxes, but there's just more risk and tight liability. So funds that could be spent on serious county issues like roads and infrastructure are gonna be wasted on lawsuits. So, but the ordinance did lead to good discussions on election security, accessibility. But I weigh in the pros and cons and the cons outweigh the benefits, I see. So as much as I would like to make symbolic vote against the use of boxes, I feel that'd be irresponsible for the taxpayers, so I can't.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Dan, Chair.
Ms. Venus.
So when I was running for this seat, the most common thing that came up was election integrity. And I believe that every voter in this county has a right to have confidence in the outcomes of their elections. And I do believe that from the individuals that I spoke to, as well as the results of the prior elections, most specifically the county council election, the last one. I believe that by and large, there are more residents that do not want these drop boxes than actually do want the drop boxes. Now, I wanna be clear, I'm not concerned with prior election results. I've never seen documentaries about mules. I've never seen anything like that. This is based solely on my belief that the citizens of this county have a right to feel confident in the outcome of their elections. Now, I've heard multiple indications over the past six weeks that there is no fraud and there have been no incidents. That, that is true to a certain extent with regards to no specific fraud being mentioned, but there have been incidents. Our prior director of elections just happened to be in the lobby of Penn Place when he saw someone dropping off more ballots than they were allowed to drop off. Now, I'm not saying whether that was intentional, mistaken, or I don't think it matters. I think it's irrelevant. I think that the bottom line is, when things like that happen, it affects individuals' faith in their elections, in their outcomes of their elections. So tonight, I am going to support this ordinance, and I would ask all you all to do the same. But again, there have, there have been good reasons on both sides, and I have listened to everything that both sides have said from the audience. I think they've been very good. So, but I am going to be supporting this and doing my part to election integrity and confidence in our elections going forward. Thank you.
There's been a lot of talk about litigation and as well as this being a council overreach. So if Attorney Skeen or Manager Robertson wanna weigh in, I'll leave that up to you guys if you wanna say anything about this agenda item.
Mr. Skeen, you wanna say anything?
No, I don't think I have any.
I would just offer, ladies and gentlemen, counsel. I think it's been a bully debate, as it should be. Democracy, that's what I served America for 30 years in doing. I have my own belief about drop boxes. I mean, I probably would have been disenfranchised because most of my ballots for 25 years was overseas or somewhere else. And I used the absentee ballot system. I don't get to vote, but I would tell you pragmatically, I have some deep concerns as it relates to, as I understand, your budget. Your 2022 budget contemplates the process as just as it worked the last time. Ergo, you embedded, not you per se or me, but previous council in December embedded the notion that this would be part of the election process. So I can assure you from the overreach side, I have concerns because it sounds like to me, well, you've given me a budget, but you don't want me you to use it for this. So when will it stop? I've had lots of guidance and thoughts on who to hire and who to fire and when we should open doors and when we shouldn't open doors. And I got that. I respect that. I'm new here. But I am definitely concerned that my job in the last cities that I've served, while I understand the passion here, I think the question really goes to what seven of you said. It doesn't fix the problem. If it fixes the problem, God bless, do that. But it just seems to me, it makes it cloudy. And so if I do what I think I'm supposed to do and use the county resources that the council appropriated in the last budget to conduct elections as I understand them, and I understand some of you may differ, then am I wrong? Am I right? The job has been extraordinarily complicated the last few weeks, and I don't know what the right answer is, but I also would leave it with, I have every confidence, I've been basically told, including today, walking out of the Chamber of Commerce, that you will get sued. Whether you prevail or not is not an issue to me. My job, I think, is your manager, your day-to-day guy, is to try to preclude that. And so I really think that, while I don't think you should shy away from the bully fight, I will recognize that if you feel you're right. But at the same time, if it doesn't fix your problem, which it won't, as far as I know. It clouds the issue, and Mr. Lombardo said, it just, it's seen bad legislation to me. So thank you. That's just my thoughts as your administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Can I just add another thing that I forgot to mention? And Mr. Robertson kind of triggered my memory on this. I just wanna tell a quick story because, you know, there's been some talk about, you know, some of us being like the swing bolt and whatnot. I personally don't really like that, that type of label being put on another person on council because this isn't the United States Senate. This is Luzerne County Council where we're supposed to be helping to fix roads and fix our prison and, you know, do good things for the people of Luzerne County. Over the weekend, I was actually approached by two prison guards who very, very emphatically asked me, what are you guys doing for us? I feel like when we hear about these meetings, nothing is getting done. So for the last two, three meetings, we've heard the public talk about this. And we could have been talking about other things. We could have been talking about how to fix our roads. We could have been talking about how to get our coroner's office some more money. I have a 150-page document in my car right now from the coroner's office discussing how one of their employees has about 1,000 hours where they just don't get paid for because they don't have any other option except for to continue to work. Because that's how many cases we have. And though I'm extremely passionate about this issue, and though I use my free time outside of council and outside of my two jobs that I work to try to make sure that this Act 77 law gets repealed by electing politicians that will change the law. I know that this isn't our purview. And this, to me, hearing this debate and having to continue this debate and potentially having to hear it again in another form at some point is, I feel like this just embarrasses us as a council and it embarrasses the county. Because here in Luzerne County, I don't know if you know this, I know many of you do, but we have a problem. We have a number of openings in our county and reasons why a lot of our offices and departments don't function right. And the reason why that is, is because of the 11 of us up here and because of how we behave at these council meetings. We need to do better. We need to talk about better things and we need to try to help the citizens of Luzerne County because that's what we all raise our right hand to do. So please think about that tonight. This isn't about politics. This isn't about being Republican or Democrat. I'm as Republican as the day is long. But this is, this is, this is beyond that at this point. We can, we can fix this other ways. If we wanna talk to Denise Williams, let's go there. Let's talk to her. You know, if we wanna fix the election board and try to change it, that maybe we have a new chair of the election board, reconfigure it so that we can, you know, make the process better over that way. This is not the place to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Dan, Chair. I need to piggyback on that. Mr. Lombardo's correct. All those things you mentioned are major issues, fixing the roads, infrastructure, the prison. Absolutely could have spent a lot more time on those issues, how we not address this issue. But I gotta tell you, I agree with Mr. Venus. Last year on a campaign all over the county, including Agleton, Back Mountain, all over. This issue that we're voting on right now hits the heart and soul of every citizen of Luzerne County. It is not a minimal issue. It's a major issue, and all of the county is watching this issue tonight. Trust me. That's all I wanna say. I don't wanna minimize this issue at all.
Thank you, Mr. Horne. Mr. Irvin.
Once again, you know, I mean, this issue itself, I mean, you can be pro or for against boxes. It's really not that. It's also looking, we have a fiduciary responsibility here on council. And if, you know, I'm not gonna be afraid to take on a lawsuit should one be, you know, served against us. However, you know, the manager also has, you know, limited resources in the executive branch of government too. You know, the more sheriffs we send out to go pick up ballots, the more staff we go send out to pick up ballots, the less time and opportunity that they have to do the work that they need to do within the office to get the balance to the voters in the first place. The sheriff's department, they serve civil paperwork. You know, they serve PFAs. That's taking away their days to operate as a sheriff's department. They have to move prisoners from the prison to the court system. We just recently gave them increases in their yearly contracts, and they're still looking for more people to work. By putting those resources focused on five ballot boxes, and we don't know how many ballot boxes the Board of Elections decides to buy in the near future and continue to propagate these boxes, you know, so if there's more, then it's gonna require the executive branch to spend more resources to keep ballots up. You know, if it expands to 76 municipalities, I don't think they have enough manpower to go and pick those boxes, you know, pick all the, everyone of those boxes at this point in time. So when does it really stop? You know, part of being a leader is to put a stop to something, stop it in its tracks right now, not be afraid to take on the litigation. You know, there's been litigation in the past where judiciary branches of government sued commissioners because they took away funding. And of course, it's ruled in favor of county commissioners because you can't force the commissioners into raising taxes to fund another operation if necessary. I mean, we have a budget that we need to follow. We're, I think, we're all pretty conservative with being just being responsible. And I'm not afraid of the Board of Elections suing. First of all, but where are they gonna get the funding? I mean, it has to get, they have to get the funding. I mean, it has to get, they have to get the funding from us as the county. And we, we, maybe could be a stretch. We could put a stop to their lawsuits because we won't fund their lawsuits. So where, where does it end? I mean, we have that fiduciary arm. You know, I think the power rests in us as the fiscal stewards. But we also have to look out for the executive branch, like I said, for sheriffs. Yes, they can be utilized to pick up those ballots, but when does it end? Do we have enough sheriffs to do the duties on a daily basis for a two-week period? So what the hell with the rest of the duties that they have to do, serving papers, doing PFAs, protecting the most vulnerable citizens in this county? Safety issues, concerns. You know, do we just stop the courthouse from processing or adjudicating cases because they're out on the road picking up ballots? And heaven forbid they get in an accident or something happens to those ballots. So we're putting them at risk by sending them out every day on a daily basis to pick up those ballots. It's easier to put a stamp on a ballot than to actually send them out. It's costing a whole lot of money for this process in totality. I think you really have to look at the bigger picture here. This is well within our wheelhouse from a fiscal perspective. I don't think it's impacted, I mean, some counties have reservations that it is impacting the operation. When we speak as a majority, we have the ability to set policies, procedures. We have the ability to create codes, change codes, or that county law. You know, whether Mr. Manager likes it or not, we can change a code. He has to live with it. He has to find a way to work through it. That's what state legislature does. They create laws. Sometimes they're bad. They get litigated. They're not afraid to take those out.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Do we have a motion in a second? Can we roll call, please?
I have something really quick.
Ms. McDermott, go ahead.
With the Act Eighty-Eight, aren't we in, aren't we a recipient of a million-dollar grant that could fund security since the security is such a big concern? And I also thought that we're supposed to get security cameras that will be ours, that will be on the drop boxes. So they would be more secure than a mailbox. But aren't we getting that million-dollar grant every year from the state? Can't we use that for the security? And then also, what are we cutting out? If we're, if we're eliminating them from moving the drop boxes, if they, if they have this money, can't they use it to move the drop boxes? Maybe I'm wrong, but I think we should look into that.
Yeah, we might have lost that grant because we moved the agenda item to the work session. But if anybody wants to speak to that, they can. Mr. Robertson? Ms. Gilbert?
I mean, do you want to wait to the work session?
If you want to just address Ms. McDermott's question, would we be able to use it?
I would refer probably to Ms. McBride and as I see it, if we defer, as I understand, by moving it to the work session, there'll be an encore performance with the council in September the thirteenth. It will become, is the correct term moot? Because we won't be able to acquire this piece of equipment. And it has absolutely nothing, as I understand, we're prepared to bring the Vice President, I think he's connected by Zoom to talk to you, if you wish. It's nationwide. It's highly state-of-the-art. It is expensive. The equipment is three fifteen and the contract is a hundred thousand dollars more. But the issue behind it, as I understand, is if we don't get on the order list, because every county in Pennsylvania may or may not be wanting to do the same piece of equipment. It's that selective that we won't be able to acquire. And I'm just challenged by the notion, as I understand, and I'm not been to an election here, that with the implementation of some of this grant, there's also a residual law or policy has been passed by the state of Pennsylvania that you have to have your ballots tallied by twelve oh one, the day following. Everyone I've spoken to says that's just basically, we're not going to be able to do that. I mean, we can talk about it a lot, but given the resources we've dedicated to the people and people to volunteer without some technology, whether it's this one or something else. Those who have been here before just tell me, I've heard the word impossible. I don't think anything's impossible, but they can't contemplate how that will happen. So I used the term moot and I'll be quiet after that because I believe waiting for September thirteenth and then another session is we won't have it here by the time we need it to move forward with having it at this election. It'd be fine for the next election, but concern me, I, I'd have to operate on this one coming up.
We don't have to wait till the thirteenth.
For really quick.
Special.
The grant has already been applied for. That's what your question was. The grant has already been applied for. Excuse me, hold on.
Who is charging me?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. The question was that Ms. McDermott is asking if we do, if we do get the grant, which I understand we might not be able to, because if we don't have the ballots counted, we can't get the grant. But can that money be used for security for the drop boxes?
We were already awarded.
We were, we were already awarded. Every county that applied for the grant got the grant. We get one million forty-one thousand.
But my question is, could that money be used for security for drop boxes?
There are a number of other things that the board and, as I understand, the board and the Bureau have said, aside from this piece of equipment, training, personnel, videos, camera systems that were, not that we ordered anything, because we haven't, given that this is on the agenda, just didn't feel confident that we should be moving forward, executing things that we may not be able to act. So the principal piece of this was, but yes, ma'am, in terms of other things. And maybe, Mr. McBride, could you speak to just a couple of the other items that deal with just elections at a global level?
Can we speak about this at the work session?
Yes. I was just trying to, I'm just trying to get to the answer to Ms. McDermott's question because it was about item. It was about this item. Can we use it for security purposes for these drop boxes? That's all she asked. So I understand that the machine's tied to it and all that. And that could be on the work session. It was moved to the work session, but can we use this for security? Yes. Ms. McDermott, do you have any other questions about what, about what it could be used for while Ms. McBride is at the podium?
No, that, that's, well, that's a good use of it and it would be very disappointing if we lose that grant by putting it off. So I hope, I hope that's not the case and I hope every council member thinks about that. Throwing a million dollars, a grant away this year and every year thereafter is disgusting. So I hope that's not the case. Thank you.
I think the question is, is if we don't get the machine, will it affect the grant anyway?
Yes, yeah, because we won't be able to process the ballots.
That is for sure.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, Mrs. Soro, I understand you remember the election board, but at this meeting, you remember the public right now. So we, we have to wait to public comment to speak. I'm like trying to kind of answer Ms. McBride's question without talking about the machine because the machine got moved. So this is, her question was answered, I believe. I think she said that she's okay with it now. Can, we have a, we have a motion and a second for seven. Can we please vote on this? Roll call on the drop boxes. Mr. Perry?
Nope.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Will Oven?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavag?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Five yes. Six, no, motion fails. We can continue the conversation about the grant in the work session when we get to the item that got moved over there. Now we have public comment on non-agenda items.
So I want to make it clear, we were told actually, Luzerne County Board of Elections was told by the Bureau that we count them by midnight every year. And that there is no, there is no, that this was something that would help, but that we count them by midnight every year. So this is, this grant should be no problem and that we will have no problem and the clawback will be no problem and that even though Luzerne County has put on the hook for this one million dollars in case we fail to meet all of the requirements, that it would be no problem. And that's why it didn't need to go in front of council. The other thing is Luzerne County Board of Elections was not, had no vote. And I think it's important that you all know that we were not approached to vote on this piece of equipment at all. Even though Article Three of Title Twenty-Five PA Election Code clearly states in Section Three Oh Two that it is the county board, Board of Elections with the respective counties shall exercise in a manner provided by this act. All powers granted to them by this act shall perform all the duties imposed upon them by this act, which shall include the following. To purchase, preserve, store, maintain primary and election equipment of all kinds, including voting booths, ballot boxes, voting machines, and to procure ballots and all other supplies for elections. In Commonwealth Court Case Four Fifty-One, Judge Covey reiterates it with an emphasis on her decision filed on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. She said, because the Pennsylvania Constitution reserves the power to provide by general law the use of choice of voting machines to the General Assembly and the General Assembly has enacted the Election Code, which delegates the said power of the county board, county's Board of Elections. And the Election Code is the final authority on voting machines in this Commonwealth. Thus, the election board has the exclusive control over all election equipment. My question, we on the Board of Elections were advised that this sorting machine was being purchased by the Bureau, not the other way around. It should, as it should be. It was never put up for a vote by the board. Okay, why not? Why was it not put out for bid? There is no RFP on it. It is over thirty thousand dollars. There is no RFP on this, on this, this machine. Okay, none. And finally, why wasn't it included in a work session? I'm asking each of you to ask the Bureau that and the county manager. Thank you.
Ms. McBride is here. Can I ask her a question?
I mean, is it on, is it on that item?
On this side.
Yeah, she's, she's speaking on it and the people from the machine thing are on in Zoom.
We'll wait till later. We'll wait till later.
Mr. McKay?
Yeah, non-agenda items. Yeah, last, probably eight months ago, we sat in this room with Congressman Aldous people all over the area from Dallas and all, but the rain tax and all. Well, I guess what? I seen Congressman Barr right Saturday and I asked him, I said, what's going on with this rain tax? I said, how come Luzerne County is the only one in the area paying it? Blackwater County dumps into Luzerne County and they don't pay a penny. You know what he said? He said, oh, we got to prevent a raise. Yeah, a raise for us, but they don't pay a penny. And now today on sixteen, they announced on the morning news that we can't wash our car in our driveway. They're going to stop that now because of chemicals and I, I mean, come on, where's the end, you know? These guys got to do something about this, you know? Luzerne County is the only one paying it. Saturday's paper, the Times Leader, people's losing their houses because of the sanitary filing leans against them. Is this proper? Luzerne County is the only one losing their houses because of it? Blackwater County is putting in and it's flown down. Harrisburg was told they didn't pay a penny and all, all the residents was here and nobody did nothing. Why are we the only ones paying it? Please help the people of Luzerne County. Thank you.
Mr. McKay, make sure you keep speaking to the senators about that. It's a federal mandate. So we got to, we got to keep talking to them. We wrote letters saying that we don't want it.
Do you think it's right for Luzerne County not to do anything? And Blackwater County is dumping their water into the river and they don't pay a penny? And Barr Wright said, oh, we're keeping the rates down. You're keeping the rates down for the people of Blackwater County, not us. Yeah, speak up. I appreciate it.
I just want to address that point.
Yeah.
Luzerne County is not assessing that fee.
No, I know you're not. I know you're not.
I just want to tell you.
No, no, I understand.
Listen to this part. There's seventy-six municipalities in Luzerne County.
Right.
More than half, I think it's thirty-eight or forty.
Paying.
Don't pay the fee.
Oh, don't pay it, yeah.
More than half the county does not pay the fee. There's only thirty-seven that do pay the fee. So it's not county-related. Has nothing to do with us in the county. We're doing all we can, like Ms. Rado said, sending letters to our legislators and bugging them about it. We can't pass it.
But Brian, where's the end of it?
I agree with you. I'd rather not pay, honestly.
None of us like it. I mean, I think I could confidently speak for everybody on this board. None of us like it.
I can't believe it.
Yeah, yeah. None of us like it. We just, we're handed high.
And now they're starting to stuff with the, you can't wash your car in your driveway. Why? That was on the news this morning.
Any other members of the public? Ms. Kroger?
So where's somebody to speak up and say it? I see his head's bouncing, but nobody's saying that.
It's Ms. Kroger's turn, Mr. McKay.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kara. So, um, thank you. Thank you. I don't like that risk in the county that you serve and you just told me that I matter with your votes. So thank you. Really, I appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
I just have two things. I'm going to ask that at your next session, you put on the agenda to formally support House Bill Eighteen Twenty-Eight. It is not going to affect the actual vote for the bill. It's just going to show the community that you believe that a public health advocate is necessary to stand between the public and healthcare corporations. My other thing I wanted to say is in regards to your five percent or more match for grants for American Rescue funding. At a previous meeting, I had, I remember somebody saying even more than five percent would better your chances. How is this not a pay-to-play kind of scenario? I understand that the not-for-profits are supposed to be competitive, but small business grants shouldn't be. But also with that, these funds are to raise everyone in our community, not just the ones who have money to participate in the, in this pay-to-play design. How do we expect small not-for-profits who had their funding decimated during this pandemic crisis to come up with a few thousand dollars to put up a five to ten percent match? There's a lot of not-for-profits that don't have any money left. Is council supposed to work for all of us in Luzerne County, not just have, not just those who have the money to access this grant? I recall at a previous council meeting, like I said, that they want people to have those funds so they have something to lose. Exactly how much more do we have to lose before we are deemed worthy enough? Many people have already lost so much, including their own life. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Any other members of the public? I have someone with their hand up. Vivian, did you want to talk on a non-agenda item?
Yes, I did. Vivian Cragler-Lutina from Nescapack. I want to go back to about a year ago when there was talk of giving money to the people who were on the Homestead Program to help them out. I sympathize with the gentleman who's talking about people losing their homes. We've gone through in the last two years, all of us. I don't care if you're elderly, young, single, married, children, what. We have all experienced the most read, the most anybody could imagine. Now we're faced with all the sudden monkeypox. It seems like it's one thing after the other. I'm not sure if it's to try and deter people not to go out and vote or to deter people not to do this or that. But we've all been in the lockdown. We've all faced the problems. I've listened to, over the course of the last year, I have listened to county council. I have read the articles where one attorney said, do not, under no circumstances, give money to the people of Luzerne County. We give money to Hazelton so they can continue to steal houses from people who are trying to pay their, their mortgages or trying to pay their taxes, their back taxes, because everything has come to a halt. or trying to pay their taxes, their back taxes, because everything has come to a halt. It's time Luzerne County takes care of the people of Luzerne County. And if it means giving them every person who owns a home and on the Homestead program a hundred dollars, do you know how far that would go? Gas prices, food prices are so outrageous that the state has even given federal food stamps, extra stamps to people that were in the beginning covering a month's worth of food. Now these people are lucky if it's covering two weeks' worth of food. Think about that. Think about the people who are having it the hardest. Don't think about the people who are making ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's not right. And for those of you who have to work three or four jobs, is that fair to use? That you can't spend the time with your family all because of a lockdown that could have been rectified right from the beginning? That's all I have to say, is start helping the people of Luzerne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, Mr. Lombardo and I have a couple emails that are non-agenda items asked to be read into public record. First one, Cindy Brandon, write township to your council members. Please continue to address our dire road conditions and understand the serious liability. The county is risking road projects are not being completed before its company is being moved to another job. This is incredibly inefficient waste, this is evident in the incompletion of Presswood Industrial Drive before moving to Hanover Industrial Park. Winter is soon approaching, one of the county's plans for snow removal and care of our hundred and twenty-plus miles of county roads, we cannot have another incident as witnessed last season where an ambulance en route to a patient was barely able to ascend a county held due to poor care of the road after winter weather. Is the county's equipment in working order? Does the county have enough equipment? Does the county have personnel needed? As a latter is a concern now, is the county preparing to bid outsourcing of winter road? F O R L C is urgently waiting for more news from our council. Very sizable funds being released for road projects. We need every penny there is to fund properly replacing our roads where the dirt to the sealant and painted lines after proper drainage is obtained. We need to be requesting bids for the twenty twenty-three construction season and should be looking closely at materials proposed as we have learned that least expensive bid is not always the best. Our offer of a volunteer committee to help advise on bid requests and awards still remains. Thank you.
This one is from Carol Rosser. Dear County Council, I would like to submit the following multifaceted question to be considered, read out loud and submitted during the record to your next meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Very much appreciate detailed answers. To my question also submitted for record, Luzerne County residents are respectfully fed up with excuses and sure need movement on this road repair issue, and you are responsible for that movement. As a reminder, I live at Sweet Valley and drive over two of the worst, maintain Luzerne County roads twice daily, Sweet Valley, Main Road, and Hillside Road. My question, what in detail is council doing to expedite repairs to the county roads so liabilities reduce? Roads are passed and businesses can operate safely and unimpeded? Can council give a blanket authority to release funds up to a certain amount, say six hundred thousand dollars or less, and get eminent danger zones paved slash repaired to our satisfaction before winter? First priority on council's agenda, each meeting should be progress of road repair until all roads are repaired, period. Can you make this change immediately? I await the completion of your request. Thank you. This one is from Mr. Raybo. Home rule study commission recommendation number seven to be read verbatim in its entirety. Number seven, the recommended charter ends the insidious practice of nepotism, cronyism, and favoritism and requires appointments and hirings based on public notice, merit, fitness, and qualifications. For too long, Luzerne County government has served as a vehicle to provide patronage shops to relatives, friends, and political supporters. For too long, appointments to Luzerne County authorities, boards, and commissions have been available only to a group of insiders and political friends. These practices have excluded many qualified and meritorious candidates from service to our county. At a time when Luzerne County government should be a shining example of meritocracy, it is instead often perceived as simply a bureaucracy of well-connected. The recommended charter makes wholesale and needed reforms the ways individuals are hired for county employment and appointed to county authorities, boards, and commissions. It starts at the top with a manager who must be degreed, experienced, and have professional abilities, qualifications, preparation, and training to perform the function of the county manager. Similarly, high standards are required for the selection of each division head office, division slash office heads. Under the recommended charter, county career services, jobs must be publicly advertised. Candidates must be evaluated on the basis of merit and fitness as demonstrated by a valid and reliable examination. Other objective evidence of competence or other relevant factors, applicants are to be blindly ranked where possible, and any hiring must be made from the top three qualified applicants. For several reasons where objective measures cannot be used, the lottery system will determine successful applicants. Openings on authorities, boards, and commissions must also be advertised so any interested citizen can apply to the council for appointment. The recommended charter will also prohibit nepotism in hiring and supervisory structure of the county workforce. Sweeping changes in hiring and appointment required by the recommended charter will, in the judgment of the G S C, foster a government where merit and competence are rewarded, purpose for personnel practices are eliminated, and county government is open to the best, brightest, and most fit candidates. This one is from Controller Griffith. It is, it says, section six point zero nine, purchasing and acquisition. Purchasing and acquisition provides, sorry, purchasing acquisition procedures to be included in the administrative code shall, among other things, provide that all, A, all contracts for purchases and acquisitions shall be executed on behalf of the county by the county manager and his slash or does need, except as may otherwise be provided for in this charter or applicable law. All contracts for purchases and acquisitions in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars shall be competitively bid and awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, except as may otherwise be provided for in this charter. County council may raise the minimum set amount set forth in the subsection for purchases and acquisitions subject to the competitive bidding by ordinance. See, procedures for competitive bidding shall include, but not be limited to, definitions, advertising, and publication requirements, deposit and bond requirements, and condition terms, rules, and regulations desirable for an efficient and effective competing bidding process. The use of the technique commonly known as bid splitting to avoid the requirement for competitive bidding shall be specifically prohibited. Section two point zero nine, powers and duties. B, further county councils shall have and may exercise, but not be limited to, the following powers. Eight, except as may otherwise be provided for in this charter or applicable law, to approve by resolution adopted by affirmative vote of at least majority of its current members, any contract or obligation that would result in a payment by the county of more than twenty-five thousand dollars in any future calendar year for which no budget has been adopted, or more than seventy-five thousand in the aggregate, any two or more future calendar years in which no budget has been adopted. County council may raise the amount set forth in the subsection by ordinance.
Thank you. Any other members in public? If a motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
All favor?
Aye.
Ascension opposed? Meeting adjourned. It is eight fifty-five, we'll start the work session at nine oh five. Turn the mics on.
Recording stopped.
Mike's on.
All right, I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had the pledge of allegiance a moment of silence. Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Recording in progress.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Mr. Sheriff. Mr. McGinley.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Ten of eleven.
Okay. Additions to the additions or deletions from the work session agenda, I want to take a motion to add the the contract. The contract for voting machine, we'll add it as number be number, number eight.
Motion second.
All in favor?
All right. So far, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Number one, I'd like to move the number one and two on agenda down to the end. We would like to see number four, our number four move to number one because we have gentlemen here has been waiting patiently for several hours. We'll give them an opportunity. Number three, I move that we have a work session. Forty-five minutes and ten minutes after work session for public comment. That's my motion.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, so number four, we move to number one. And then we will have a forty-five minute work session attendance public comment. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, well. The work session agenda. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Close? All right, agenda is adopted. All right, first discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the additional use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to make repairs to the Luzern County Correctional Facility. Mr. Ravkovich.
Thank you, Vice Chair and members of the council. Here I am once again. In front of you, asking for additional funding for these projects. Back in January, we had estimates on what we thought these projects would cost. And every one of them except for our fire panel has exceeded. We have three projects that were on the table, one is replacing all of our fire equip, fire panel equipment. The second one was the elevators and today I bring to you, it's been called the roof project, but it's actually the restoration of the parapet walls of our facility. Initial estimate was seven hundred thousand dollars. In your packets is a letter from our consultant, Mark Sobek and Company. This is actually behind me, Justin Poinkowski. Sobek has been the county's roof consultant for over twenty years. If you have questions as to why the cost has gone up, like I said, they are detailed in the package that you receive for the work session, but we can also answer any kind of questions that you would have on this. The additional amount of money that we're asking for this repair is eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It's not a substantial amount, but we feel that, and our consultant believes that if we get this done, we should be good for at least the next fifteen to twenty years. Fifteen to twenty years with any, no leaks coming in from the roofs or walls.
It's only fifteen years, Darren.
Well, this, this part is, if you recall, in twenty fourteen, I believe, they had done a roof repair on the flat parts of the roof. But not, they did not touch the parapet wall or the caps on, on this. This portion would be guaranteed.
This portion, it always accepted at least thirty years of not work.
Thirty years?
Thirty years. It's a non corrosive material being used, so it won't corrode.
But the but the part that was done previously back in the roofing aspect of it has fifteen years remaining on. With the total project that we're presenting today is thirty years. Open to any questions that anybody wants.
Mark, get them in writing. Contract. Mr. LaScavitch, go ahead.
So I'm looking at some of the reasons here for the increases. COVID nineteen, that's, that should already seal, that's good. You know what I mean, I understand that this happened start eighteen into nineteen. I just we have consultants, not only this project, we come in with many projects. One was the bridge, we get a price of seven fifty, we do it for two eighty, save half a million dollars on phone calls. I'd be willing to call people tomorrow and get a price on that myself because the other thing is difficulty with project logistics. They haven't known they're looking at prison, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that shouldn't even be on here, in my opinion. There's no reason for that to be here because I saw a call to prisons and I told the trucking company, when those prisons expect to be there one hour until they crawl through every inch of that truck. In and out, that's just a given, so when you give me your rate, I'm planning on being there for an hour on top of the miles. I, I personally just looked into lumber and all because I want to expand my deck and all. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that materials came down. Substantially on pressure treated tracks, so I was quite happy to see that for my own verification. But this isn't a project that was missed by a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, we're talking a hundred and ten percent. That's just, it's my mind, I just, I have a hard time, you know, am I the only one that's got hard time around this? And, and because it exceeded it that much, I, I do believe because it's piecemeal now, we need to rebid. Because this is in two parts now, somebody else might want to reconsider taking a look at this.
If I may, this was publicly bid twice already, only received one bid.
Did we reach out to people outside this county, did we go down to?
Harrisburg.
Lancaster County, Philadelphia. Okay. Lancaster County, I see the Amish working everywhere. So maybe, maybe they would be interested in this.
But they also might not have the security clearances be able, I know for a fact the Amish companies, they're able to get around prevailing wages by all being family owned and operated, so they all have different goals. So they wouldn't actually fall under the prevailing wage rates. Be as best as a bayman, that's included in the project, a lot of people are not certified to deal with that. So if there was ever an asbestos contamination issue and somebody were sued, the prison, the county, if something wasn't properly baited, that would all go into some of those additional costs that you're seeing here from one competitive bid that was received.
And, and last but not least, I know we brought up about hiring consultants who get into feasibility study for SCI. So is there a, a small fix for this league, just to plug it if we were to move? Because it seems like a million here, a million there, next thing you know, it's only after four million dollars, it's prison. And that could be the money that did the the study for SCI and then even money toward the prison.
Right, understood, and the answer to that would be no, it's not a great face, it's not like we could go up there and put a clear sealant on your masonry, you know, the prison's over a hundred and fifty years old, it's been neglected for many years. Fortunately, our office over the last eight years have been able to address the roofing aspects where we've been able to mitigate about ninety percent, if not more, though, all the roof related leaks. Now granted, given the roof type, it is a ballast system, so it's held by, down by stone. Way of snow and ice every year, might get a little pinhole here and there, throw a patch on it, it's fine. We're talking about mass limestone masonry blocks that are forty inches thick, weigh a couple tons of piece that we're trying to repair now that have been neglected. So we have done everything we have can, we were able to fiscally given the budget we have up until this point fixing roofs, and this is the last piece of the puzzle, at least from the roof level up, that is creating the leaks that are occurring predominantly for some.
So it's my understanding, I guess on this proposal, it's not depth. You're covering those existing dures with metal and covering that with something else?
That's correct, it'll all be aluminum covered. The only other alternative, we did have a masonry preservation expert do come in from Philadelphia, his name is Jason Coleman, he's renowned throughout the country. This was one of his options, the other two options were a mass reconstruct of all, all the parapet walls from the roof line up, which the money involved for that, tens of millions of dollars, but along the security risk given the facility being functional. Mr. Thor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just one question, I, I know you said you put the question, the polls is out there, you've got one back.
Yes.
Was that on the previous amount, seven hundred grand, or was that on, with knowledge of all this other stuff, one and a half million dollar project? Because I'm thinking, some people might want to bid on a one and a half, not a seven hundred thousand, was it put out for a rebid?
Yes, it was rebid, so the first bids were due the first week of June, the rebid was, I believe, the first port, beginning on the second week of July. This was when all of the asbestos, obviously, like I said, the COVID nineteen issues, material availability as we get closer towards the end of the year. It, it becomes a more difficult project working into the winter, fortunately, it's not a roof related issue where roofs deal with blues and primers where weather is drastically dependent on it, we're talking about doing aluminum and metals, things that you can work through it, it's just getting those materials, so.
Okay.
Overall, it's a very difficult project in a difficult location and given the time of year and all the other circumstances we outlined, I, I believe that's sufficient to understand, or at least at least understand our position, why only one bid was received through two rounds of public bidding.
Okay, my, my second question for Manager Robertson, four weeks ago, we were here in a meeting and I asked you if you could start securing feasibility study possibilities firms out there across America and you nodded in affirmative, what's your progress on that and have you contacted any yet?
There's at least three that we know of, we found some, two thousand and six, five or six existing plans. Whether they're still valid or not, I can't.
For the SCI, the state owned prison?
No, this is just for prisons in general.
No, I was asking specifically about SCI down there by Shikini, and I said we need to get a feasibility study on that facility.
My approach to a feasibility study is a global one.
Okay.
And it's that, it might be White Haven, depends on that, or it might be right here in that backyard. Because when we do this, we're, we're kind of running around like firemen saying, look down there, and then we come up and say, it's doable, but then the courts say, don't do it, so I want at budget time to bring you a budget estimate which you have reached out through, Mr. Ravkovich, to say what's penology look like in twenty twenty-five for the next hundred years, because this is a hundred and fifty year old building and that's what's going to do. Where will it be best located, what's the transportation needs, the global snapshot versus this one, and then, okay, we don't like, then this one, and then this one.
So is an outside firm going to determine that or, or internal?
In my estimation, what I told you, and I thought that was nods affirmative, we need an outsider, no spenology, those HVAC systems post COVID.
Right.
Those line of sight issues, those security, which limits it to, I would think, very few firms in the east coast, I, I don't know any specific numbers, but all of that said and done is it probably won't be anybody necessarily here local.
That's fine.
And, and that will come to me, the sequencing is, when you pass the budget, then we're postured to put that RFP out on the street because that starts the clock.
Yeah, because I'm headed to devote, like Kevin LaScavitch said, for all these one million dollar additions, all the time.
Understood.
We could really be doing a professional feasibility study based on the input of all the departments here in the county, sheriff, the DA, the prison, all of their departments. I think that's the way to go, an outside pair of eyes, not internal.
We, we need an outside pair of eyes, the only thing I would submit to you is, was like, I think someone raised in the county juvenile detention facility is, it's been empty for years, but you still own it, and you still own those problems. So fifty years from now, you'll still own this prison. A land or something on it, unless you find someone to buy it. So we've got to do something preservation now for the next ten years because you're not going to be, in all probability, and correct me if you think I'm wrong, Mr. Ravkovich, no one I've seen is saying by twenty thirty, you'll be in a new prison.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Even if, even if we were to rehab the SCI retreat, you're, you're looking at at least five years until it would be move in ready and you wouldn't be able to move in.
And that's just the barracks part, that's not the admin part or any of that.
Right, nothing else, that's no new constructions, that's just rehab.
And I talked to the representative
Coffey.
Coffey and Mark with, with me, so I don't envision this being a quick project, by any stretch, either here or wherever we go.
We get back to this project? That's the request we made.
Yes.
No, parapets, we passed, my past experiences are terrible. I mean, there's all kinds of safety and other issues, so it's, it's a major project. Who did the original estimate?
That would have been our office.
Your office.
Back in twenty, late twenty twenty, correct?
So two years ago?
Correct.
At that time, we didn't know the project.
Right, and, and the project stalled for those two years.
More than double, it's a pretty high stall.
What I can say, if I could speak to the contractor, did submit a bit, C and D waterproofing out of Bloomsburg, obviously, we're not here to, you know, we have no affiliation with any contractor, it's whoever the low bidder is, and as long as we know they do good work. And what we know is they do phenomenal roofing work. Division is top notch. Recently, they did a full restoration project on St. Gabriel's to be from the screen. They're currently working on St. Gabriel's Annunciation Parish in Hazleton. These are massive multi-year, multi-phase masonry projects where we haven't yet to receive a complaint from any parishioner or from anybody at any diocese. So going forward, like you said, with parapets being difficult, the parapets for this project are located directly over the prison yard. You can't put ladders, you can't put scaffolding, you just can't erect. It all has to be done on swing scaffolding or bucket list, brought in and out on a daily basis, times coordinated. So you get about half the work done, you would attempt to assume that you would on a normal project.
Another thing I would submit to council. Now, we put two hundred, two million dollars in capital funds today. Maybe we can take a portion of this probably out of the capital. Don't say we should take the whole thing. We should take a portion. The reason I say that is the rescue funds, this is basically another million dollars aside of rescue funds. We're trying to help a lot of people, we're trying to look at projects that may be really positive for the county. You keep taking a million dollars out of that time, you're not going to have a heck of a lot left. So I would submit, we should look at the capital fund now, a piece of portion of the additional funds to the council.
Any other questions from council members? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next update on the ARP announcement and application?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll just go through this quickly. Oh, my notes. As everyone knows, on the website, the project is open. There was already two of the three hearings, I'll actually walk you through the application. The last one is March thirty-first at two PM.
Not March.
I'm sorry, August, it's been a long night. August thirty-first is a Wednesday, two PM. So anyone who hasn't been on a prior call can get on that call. Our plan is to be done on the fifteenth and to be in front of council on the twenty-seventh with the buckets, not with a list of recommendations, just here's all the applications that were received and there's this much in small business, there's this much in health and human services. That's our plan. So the application's open, if they have questions, the website for booth, because they're answering the questions and they'll funnel them back to county, if county needs to assist, is on the website and there is that interactive, it's an hour and about ten minutes, they literally walk you through every step. It is time consuming, but if you're going to fill out your application, it's, here's the page, click here. You don't know what bucket you are, click here, they walk you through every step. So if anyone didn't apply and wants to apply, I would recommend getting on this last website, it will, the last webinar, it will help you with the project. You can do it on your own and you still have till the fifteenth, but it is a pretty comprehensive project and, and like I said, it's about an hour, an hour and ten minutes. So it's out there, it's open, if there's any questions, just two quick items on some comments made. You know, Booth's going to actually come to us and say what's applicable, so to Ms. McThurman's question or to individual businesses, you know, maybe if fifty individual businesses apply, maybe they'll want to go through a chamber or another entity, but that doesn't need to be cited today on the twenty-seventh. Booth will come to you with the buckets and maybe at that point, there should be a chamber for groups who are not dealing with fifty households, but they're not prohibited from applying. So everyone can apply, the five percent match is out there, but, you know, they will come to us on the twenty-seventh with the rankings. So that's, that's where we're at. Again, Booth's email is there and our team is willing to help. So anything Booth can't answer comes back to the ARP team, myself, Mr. Riley over there, and Ms. Berich. So, yeah, Mr. Spardon.
Right, the fifteenth is the deadline for everybody to get the app in?
Yes, yeah.
Electronically or otherwise?
Yeah, so we did change one thing, so anyone who's new is applying in that app, the ten or so projects that we approved, the five hundred thousand for the two Booth is going to reach out to them personally because they're already approved, they won't obviously have the five percent because we approved them before we added the five percent. And they're going to reach out and try to get the information, so they might not formally approve, that might be a phone call, but everybody who's new is going to have to apply. And by default, you're probably better off applying even if you get a phone call versus missing the deadline, so my, my takeaway at this meeting and the last one was you're better off applying even if you applied, but nobody that council approved is not going to get the money. Assuming the project's eligible.
Everybody has to be, have their apps set by the fifteenth to September.
September fifteenth.
So you get apps on the twentieth, you know when?
That's the intent, so I mean, I will bring that up again on the thirteenth. Yeah, I will bring that up again on the thirteenth and obviously the papers can report on it, whether it's today or another, but yeah, the intent is at five PM on the fifteenth, the application process is closed.
Hey Brian, can you enlighten us more on that five percent? Is that, tell us about, about the five percent.
Yeah, so it's on the app.
Day fast, whatever.
Yeah, so it's, it's on the application because council had asked for it, we thought five percent was a fair number when we're going back and forth, some wanted more, some wanted less. I, I don't think at this point, when the buckets are there, people are going to pick out for the five percent, but I, I didn't talk to Booth about it, so I don't want to put words in their mouth, we hired them. But they're going to go through all the projects and come back with those buckets, so at that point, if they say, hey, here's a good project, but they can't hit the five percent, maybe it'll be, still be brought to council. I would say everyone should apply and Booth will bring us the buckets and we can go, go from there on the twenty-seventh.
And Brian, on the five percent?
Yep.
Are entities allowed to use other grants as the five percent match?
Yeah, I would think.
Own money, donations, whatever?
I would think so, I mean, again, it's going to ultimately come down to Booth. But yeah, I don't think it has to be like, hey, we have to raise money out of our general fund.
In kind services sometimes is worth the five percent.
We'll, we'll, we'll cross our bridge, but I think it's, I think it could be other grants, I'm not sure it could be in kind, but again, if, if Booth allows it. But the intent is to have in front of this body out of voting session, you know, here we receive three hundred applications and it's in this bucket, or we receive twenty applications and they're in this bucket. That's the intent for the twenty-seventh. I know that. So, but that's the intent and it's on the website right now, so you can click, there's one more webinar and that's where we're at. Good?
Council members?
Thank you, Mr. Swat.
Sure.
All right. Next discussion regarding the ordinance amendment to twenty twenty two fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, the election integrity grant.
Yes, I guess that's me too.
Are you?
Yeah, I guess that's more the machine. So so the grant, the process of the grant is the same as any other grant, including ERP grants. So we didn't put a fun number here because it's work session. Most of our grants, when they come in by default, go to the general fund and we have to move them because we obviously know they need to be segregated. So we apply for a grant, county administration applies for a grant, money comes in from the entity. I know I've sent emails before to council. I know when Harry Haas was here, you know, money was received and we're moving it out of the grant. So the process would be to set up a separate fund for this money. Obviously, there's some debate and we're going to speak a little bit after this about the machine. I I don't know where that's going to put us, you know, as far as getting the grant, not getting the grant. But the intent really was to have it in a separate place. So if we're up, we apply for the grant, we're getting it. If we're not going to take it, that happens. If we're gonna take it, we need a separate fund. It cannot be in the general fund or another fund. So we'll make sure that it's it's segregated if we do move forward with this grant. And we'll give you a fun number. So if, you know, we're going to move forward for voting, you'll have a fun number on there and the dollar.
Thank you, Mr. Swat. Taking the grant though, it triggers a bunch of provisions in the act. And there are, I was just looking. Underneath the provisions, it does trigger other actions. County Bureau has to pay. Policy wise and changes things. There's also a couple of ID provisions in there. So you know, we hate to talk about drop boxes and how you go back. You know, look at voter ID with the drop box. So. You know, I mean, did did the administration account for all of it? They decided to bring this one in because we kind of put a gun to our head and say, well, we're going to apply, bring this in and then we need to move it. And there's other implications that are more to occur, should be acceptable.
So I guess I didn't apply, county did, and I'm not not saying the county shouldn't have applied. And, you know, a board of elections as well as election bureau, you know, have obviously different responsibility with this. If we're going to move forward, this is a fact. I'll give you the GL lines. I understand your question. I think that's more of a either a legal question or a bureau question. It's not really the county question. The county, I agree a hundred percent. We don't want to get a grant and have to give the money back. Accounting wise, agree a hundred percent. But what we need to do, or do we have the staff to do that, is not really about a finance issue.
I mean, it's more of a finance issue because, I mean, I I think before you even go out and apply for a grant, right, as a county. We need to get the players involved first. I mean, the board has roles and responsibilities, whether they want to send it over to council to say, hey, county, go ahead and apply. Because they're going to be under the gun to accommodate all those provisions, else there's a clawback in that in this particular.
Right.
And this particular grant, which, you know, can have other impacts later on. If we don't meet those deadlines, we don't meet the provisions, we might have to send the money back to the state. This is one of those that, you know. If we accept it.
Miss Massar, wait.
You know, so I I mean, you know. I I think, you know, part of staying in people's lanes at times is also looking at these things from a big picture perspective, talking about it. You know, before it happens, before you pull the trigger on it, you know, like, for instance, with the the dock application. Right. With B C. I remember manager essentially came to us to ask permission to apply for that grant.
It was a boat launch, I believe. Yeah. Yeah.
He came in and asked permission. So my deal is is let's be consistent in in how we apply. If there's one process, let's follow that same process throughout all grants. You know, I mean, if you're going to apply for a boat launch, you come to us and ask for permission to apply for the grant because there's going to be implications. We take the grant and we have to probably expend other monies to match that grant. So you know, in this case, somebody went and applied for it, didn't tell council and and didn't really tell the board, I don't think. You just went out and did it. And it's going to cause other implications from a budgetary perspective. You know, it's nice to get the money, but there's strings attached to that money.
If I can just speak to that quickly, I did also read the bill. I spoke to Senator Baker, who was the main sponsor of the bill, and I I understand there is a clawback provision in it, that that's that is true. However, the only real implication of not following whatever the stipulations are in the bill and, you know, saying, okay, well, you have to pay the money back. It's just saying we don't have to pay, we we have to pay the money back. If we don't do it, the only punishment is that we will not be eligible for the grant the next year, which obviously is is a problem, but that doesn't necessarily mean, okay, we we screwed up. So now we have to, we bought this machine or we did whatever. Now we have to pay a million dollars back plus we're on the hook for three hundred fifty thousand dollars for a machine too. So there isn't really, like, I feel like there's there's really no punishment, but the the clawback provision is just a standard provision in in grants like that. So I so I'm not really, I'm personally, as as a council member, not worried about us having to pay that back, whether or not we're able to 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 follow, you know, all the stipulations in the bill, although from what I, from my understanding, we do a significant portion of those things already in the Bureau of Elections.
Well, without going into every stipulation of the grant, because that's more, you know, the election bureau and the election board. I could say that from the elections that I was involved with and the elections that I've been a county employee for, I don't think we ever were done at midnight. I know former managers that send people home at ten o'clock at night because we were not going to be done by midnight. So if we're going to worry about the provisions, that's one of them. And if that's one of them, then maybe we shouldn't have taken it because I don't think without this machine we could do it. I could also say there's probably twenty or thirty, it's not like five county employees helping elections. If anyone was ever over there during the, you know, the recount, there's a lot of employees from other departments. So it's not like there's five people there. I know the board knows this. There's probably thirty bodies over there. So if that's one of the one of the issues, I'm not sure we can do it. I'm not sure it's easily done and I'm not trying to, you know, put the cart before the horse. You had a right to table it. You already did that. And and I understand why you did that, but I'm not sure council understands where the administration can meet that deadline. And if that's the case, maybe we shouldn't have applied for the money. So I I kind of agree with Mr. Ever. Like, there is definitely clawback portions. I get Mr. Lombardo's point, like, hey, if you're going to get it and you have to give the money back, that's not an ideal situation, but we got the money. But it's also not ideal if we're not going to be done by twelve oh one. Like I said, from my experience, and I've not been administrative service division head, I'm just budget and finance, but I've been here long enough that I don't think we ever were done by midnight the day of.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, and I wanted to neck end because every city I've served has different rules and regulations. What has it been our, at least recently, our historical precedent in terms of applying for things? And without coming to the bottom, fair enough, it's a very valid question. But within the last year, fourteen months, we've applied for, according to what I've been told by those who have dealt with grants in the front office and then verified by D C E D, we applied for three point five nine five, so three and a three and a half million dollars in February of twenty one for the hospitality industry grant. No resolution or council action was required. Then a couple of months later, in March of twenty twenty one, we applied for the state facility closure transition program of over two million dollars. No council resolution was required. So I'm trying to stay the precedent as I understand it. And what I have is, if it's available and it doesn't require a council manic action, but I believe we, between Ms. McBride and Mr. Skeen, myself, tried to make sure you all had as much visibility in emails, notes. So we wouldn't have the gun to head mentality days, days when we knew it. And I don't think I had one email back from anyone or one phone call from anyone that I'm aware. If I missed you, may I culp up my, but I'm just trying to follow the precedent that this council, as I understand, the previous councils have followed.
To answer that, the first time I heard about it was late Friday afternoon, very late. So it was only a couple of days before this meeting. My concern was, I don't know how we go about spending four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars without putting out an RFP. I I just, you know, we're limited to twenty five thousand, so there was no way I'm ever going to vote for something.
Fair question. And I think this McBride will tell you, but my understanding is that this is a sole source.
I I agree with you.
Okay, I'm just.
I I agree with what you're saying, but that'd be like us putting out a quote for cars and saying, you know what, we're looking for Fords. I don't think we're legally allowed to do that. I think we have to open up to a vehicle specification. There should have been a specification written. It should have been out and the money should have been there.
Well, we're going to talk about that number. Yeah, we've got the subject matter experts coming up, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other questions, council members? Why did that on fact? Number six.
Can I speak to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Park.
We had a report last meeting from the head of the Development Services Group. And she indicated at that time that we've done eleven years of level funding. And consider that. Just look at this linear inflation over those eleven years. It's roughly thirty percent. If you compound it, it'd be more than that. So there's no way you can do the same thing today that you could on eleven years ago, that money. So this is just a resolution urging our our state legislatures to support increasing the funding, to go back to their offices in Harrisburg and do some work to help us with that. Sided a couple of items there, the fact that they put a lot of money in the ready day fund. I think everybody who reads papers or watches media, the first hospital made their announcement, they're going to close. You have two state legislators there saying this is wrong, we need the services, et cetera, but we need the money to provide the services. I'd be happy to add anything that someone would wish and if somebody, if group wants, I'll draft a letter so that everyone can sign it. So when we send it to down to Harrisburg, everybody has that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. McGinn. Any other questions, discussion? No? Okay. Move on to the next item. Discussion regarding ordinance amendment to twenty twenty two fiscal year budget Luzerne County Division Head salaries.
Again, I ask to have this placed on the agenda. God bless our division heads. I think they all have a tough job. And depending on where they are at one point in time, this calendar, whatever, they all have issues that they got to deal with, big issues. In order for our county to run, we need those division heads to be top quality people, to make those decisions that need to be made on a day to day basis and, you know, work within the framework of our county government. And this is not a knock on anybody, but we hired two division heads very recently. And we paid each one of those people ninety four thousand five hundred dollars. We have several division heads who have worked in the county for many years and more people reporting to them. And we're paying them eighty some, like ninety or ninety one. This would just bring everybody up to that same level of ninety four or five, and that would be the floor for divisions.
I guess there was a mention on the salary caps, you know, we don't belong being the the salary.
This is a budget amendment to provide that money. We're not getting into salary caps.
Salary board.
We're not in the salary board. We're making a budget.
The budget was placed, I I heard earlier, the budget was placed at the beginning of for twenty twenty two.
Well, you can make an amendment at any time, Mr. Scatch.
I understand that. But it bothers my mind that somebody was hired. In the first place, people shouldn't have catapulted these people. That was the first mistake, in my opinion. That's only my opinion. But you've done that, you got to, you got to deal with it. I don't know where, I I'm just saying, when the time comes for that budget, I will not vote for a tax increase because I know for a fact natural gas has been flying up like crazy the last two days. And the worst is yet to come. Fuel's going to be going back up. It started today. And we have a lot of things to spend money on and.
The doctors agree. But I think we have to make sure our people are compensated fairly in light of what.
I agree a hundred percent, but people already took a deal, right? They start at the salary to get a rate increase every year.
As you probably know, there was two years where we didn't do anybody, none, I represented any salary increase.
I understand totally. My job, I didn't get one through five. You know why I was told? Because healthcare was going up at a record pace. So it's either hope pay your healthcare or get it so you're not getting both. So I totally understand.
In that situation, they're paying a higher premium, we've added to the workday. You know, that's stuff that's happened over the course of time. And you're right, you haven't got a raise. Most of the people who are going to be sitting around this council are not going to get a raise. I've been here for eleven years. We haven't changed that. Structure's still the same. And I personally would not vote to have council members get a raise. That's my personal opinion.
And I'm certainly going to tell you, I'm not here for the money.
I think you realize eleven years, I have not given you that. But I do think it's important that we pay our people fairly, which is the primary thing here. When we hire new people who have not worked with the county directly, you know, not been in those positions, don't have that experience, and we pay them ninety four or five.
And again, I I I said it before and I'll openly say it again, I think that was a mistake. Somebody has to start at ground zero, work their way up. And I said right from the beginning that I did an average of all the counties in Pennsylvania. The average salary for a commissioner was sixty nine nine. Throughout the country was seventy two nine. So I don't think that we're underpaying anybody because there's three commissioners running counties everywhere for a lot less money and a lot more headache.
Well, I think.
And they're only, I'm not discounting the job of the division head and I'm running the whole county. So I did a comparison to be fair that way. I don't know how else you could do it.
Well, first of all, the commissioner, former governor is not here. And responsibilities have been changed by the charter. And then we all agreed to that. That's why we're sitting here. So the responsibilities that the commissioners, the three of them have, you know, were not full-time positions, quote unquote. Whatever salary that was in the budget, whatever was approved, that's what they got paid. This is a motion to get people at the same level, which I think is only fair. When you think about the years of service, when you think about the number of people that report to them, it's only fair to make that adjustment.
Mr. Park?
I'm always in favor of giving everybody their fair amount of salary. However, just for the purpose of bringing everybody up together to the same amount, I disagree with that because everybody's not going to be together. That would just be the base. Ninety four or five. And I I think really it should be based more on merit of their position and the responsibility of that division. They're not all the same. And to pay them all the same, I think is wrong. And again, it should go by merit. That's my opinion. Not everybody, it's not a union shop. They don't all get paid the same. They shouldn't all get paid, in my opinion. They all have different responsibilities. You can't say every division is handling the same amount of responsibility just by virtue alone of the amount of employees they're they're managing. That has to remain anyway. But I'm not in favor of just bringing everybody up to that same level. Not me. Thanks for speaking.
Any other comments, council members? All right, moving on. Discussion regarding the ballot sorting system machine and license, which has been moved to the work session from the voting.
That's right.
So much of what I was going to talk about tonight has become a little bit moot since it's been moved to the work session, so I'm going to skip through some of it and then answer any questions if that's okay with you. So I am recommending the purchase of the Agilis Mail Ball Sorting System Run Run Back Election Solution. And just to clarify, this did not need to be put out for RFP because they are a sole source of this election equipment.
It was the one.
Sole source.
Sole source.
Oh.
The purchase of a mail ballot sorting system is paramount in ensuring that the bureau can count all the mail-in ballots received by the deadline set by the state legislature. Again, Run Back Solutions offers the only machine to fit the needs of the Bureau of Elections. And while we could purchase a regular mail sorter, which is what other counties do, it would not fit our needs. This system will allow the bureau to scan eighteen thousand ballots per hour and significantly speeds up processes that would otherwise be done manually. This sorting system automatically prints time and date on envelopes, scans voter barcodes and captures images of our envelopes. It does not count the ballots. It simply scans them into our system. So it's taking a process that we currently do manually and just automates that. And a big reason we are advocating for the purchase of this machine is is because about a month before the election, we tie up county employees from all different departments. And it's just not sustainable for the bureau or the county anymore. So that's a big reason why we're advocating for it. So if there are any specific questions that I could answer, I'd be happy to do so.
Deputy Director, just very quickly, so what is the deadline to? When is our drop dead date essentially for this, for ordering the machine?
Yesterday. It's um, it's it's really something that needed to be done as soon as possible.
Mr. Lombardo. Ms. McBride. Again, I'm going to refer back to what was spoken earlier at the meeting, and I I just need you to answer on this. Title twenty-five, Article three of the Pennsylvania Election Code, which we're all obligated to follow. County Boards of Elections, not not the Bureau, Boards of Elections. shall perform all duties imposed on them by this act, which shall include the following. To purchase and maintain election equipment of all kinds and all other supplies for elections. It goes on to say, thus, the election board has exclusive control over election equipment. Were you aware of this language when you went ahead with this proposal?
Yes, I consulted with the Office of Law before.
And they, you were aware of this provision?
Yes, it does not apply to us.
It doesn't apply to the Bureau?
It does not apply to us, no.
And why is that?
Because we don't have a commissioner's form of government. It does not apply to loser counting.
Act twenty-five, Title twenty-five, Article three, the Election Code doesn't apply to our county?
Mr. Skeen.
Mr. Skeen. So is that from what? Oh, this is spoken to before, from that case?
Title twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, well, that case in particular is not applicable. They're taking out of context a quote that the court quoted from a, the plaintiff who lost the case. That was their quote. So the court didn't write that. The court took that information from the briefs and argument of the attorneys.
Actually, it was Judge Koby that wrote that.
Okay, actually, it wasn't. That's the person who signed it, signed it after coming to a decision. I'm not, but I'm going to address that. So the decision itself actually is not favorable to the position that you're implying.
Okay, so it's your opinion then that in this county, loser county, our election board should not be, uh, should not be given the task of voting on which equipment, election equipment to purchase?
So the code, the administrative code.
Of the county.
Of the county. I was not here, so I was not, uh, you know, a part of it being written. But what it appears substantially is that the authors of that document took Title twenty-five and they divvied out the duties and responsibilities to the Bureau and to the Board. So in the commissioner.
But I don't see that.
But you're quoting something that was stated by a plaintiff in the case. But if you go to the code.
Section three oh two, called Powers and Duties of County Boards. There is a language.
In?
Section C. It's the actual language. Section three oh two of the code. I don't think this is a judge's opinion here. You're stating the sections.
I didn't say it was a judge's opinion. It's in an opinion quoted by the court or plaintiff's argument they made in the case. However, what I'm saying is that the administrative code was inside of twenty-five and divvied it up between the Board and the Bureau. So Title twenty-five, when it's being, when it's being used in a commissioner form of government, where the commissioners are also usually on board. They're also in charge of the finances, so that would make more sense. When our administrative code was written, which was after the charter passed, the duties and responsibilities were divided between the Bureau and the Board. So here, unlike in a commissioner form of government, government, we have a five-person board of citizens that are there to advise that aren't being paid to do the job, right? Whereas the Bureau, who has paid employees and a budget under our charter and code, allows them to run that part of the elections. So if you look at Title twenty-five and you compare it to our administrative code, you'll see the provisions are there and they're just split up instead of being one way.
So in your opinion, and according to our administrative code, that the election Bureau has full authority to purchase this equipment?
Yeah.
And not our election board?
I think that the Board should be, uh, they should consult together. They should work together.
Mr. McBride, did you consult with the election board on this machine?
I reached out to them, notifying them that they, that we were applying for the grant and that we were going in front of county council for approval.
Of that machine?
Yes.
Did you get an answer back from them?
I received one email back with a couple of questions, so I answered them, and then I received another email. Just saying, good job. So I didn't receive any other correspondence.
Did I, had I locals ever discussed the election board?
Mr. Urban.
So I'm going to read you Title fifty-three, twenty-nine sixty-two A. Powers granted by statute with respect to the following subjects, the Home Rule Charter shall not give any power or authority to the municipality contrary to, or in limitation or enlargement of powers granted by statutes which are applicable to a class or classes of municipalities. For, let's see here. This would be A five, the registration of electors and the conduct of elections. What that means is that we, as a municipality, our Home Rule Charter does not allow us to enlarge or diminish the powers of the Board of Elections. Okay, because at the end of the day, they are tasked to conduct elections. They are tasked to also, they are the board of registrations, so they register voters, register electors. And then, so, you know, if you segue that with Title twenty-five, we really have to follow Title twenty-five uniformly across the state of Pennsylvania, regardless of what our Home Rule Charter says. Election law is election law. It doesn't say that we can go outside and stroke it of, of, you know, them choosing equipment versus them being the ones that buy the equipment. There's a lot of powers and duties, which I've said that multiple times to county council, verbatim, from the law, from the acts. You know, that's the same argument that the DA was using. When this council decides to vote to sort of resign the DA, which we can't do. Although our charter says one thing, it is in conflict and contrary to state law. And and, you know, just because we're a Home Rule Charter does not make murder legal here. We decided to take murder off of the criminal code, which we can't do because crimes code is consistent across Commonwealth Pennsylvania. You know, right now, the DA issue is is consistent across Pennsylvania. We're a third-class county. So the classification as a municipality, loser counties are third-class county. All classifications of counties have to follow the same Title twenty-five laws, which, as I stated in the past, our admin code has the division head of admin services to be the the Board's clerk. That's in direct conflict with Title twenty-five, which allows the Board of Elections to vote on their clerks publicly. So imagine, I think the last clerk they voted on publicly was Erin Harvey. Am I correct? So she was the clerk to the board. But she was the clerk to the board when she worked here. But if we had Dave Parsnick in that position, Dave Parsnick by our admin code would be the clerk to the board. And they have clerk to the board, which is Erin Harvey, who worked for the Bureau. Now they can go outside the scope and say someone else is the clerk to the board. They don't have to choose a county employee to be that clerk. So, I mean, we need to fix certain things with our own admin code that are in direct conflict with the law. You know, and I disagree with Mr. Skeen on on the provisions of Title fifty-three because we can't change election law. We all know this. We're county legislators. We we can read the law. I mean, I think Title fifty-three is clear that you can't enlarge or diminish their power. They have a a a over a dozen powers and duties under the law. Whether we're home, a home rule charter, all that tells us is this is how we structure and run administratively speaking. We have the county manager that we hire as a Board of Eleven. We set the policy majority. Yes, we can't impact them day to day as individuals. We cannot tell them what to do as officials. But as a board of majority, we can impact their lives. You know, if we, uh, in any way, shape or form, as long as it's a majority that speaks here at this body. Now, getting back to the law, Title twenty-five is Title twenty-five. I don't, I would have thrown my own father on the bus when they threw, well, basically when Mr. Pedri came in here and recommended Dominion Machines contrary to the committee at the time that wasn't hard to intercept. And which Mr. Lett was part of at one time, was a member of the Board previous. And and I had sidebar conversation with him, you know, and Mr. Pedry did not. He was not the Board of Elections. He didn't have the sole authority to tell county council at the time that this is what we were going to buy. And and same thing with the electronic poll books. Miss Crystal came in years ago and and asked this body to go and buy electronic poll books for this county, which I would have objected to that as well because none of those initiatives went to the Board prior. You know, they should vet those products. They should vet the process. They have the ability to change process and procedure, vote on it in public. And unfortunately, that's why I said we all have to work together as as seventeen individuals, eleven of us, county manager and the five of them. To to kind of run elections the right way in this county. Yeah, it's it's moneyed because we have seventeen heads. There are three commissioners who are running the county. They're part of their home boards that realize when they're running for public office for one year, none of them are in the Boards of Elections. And the court appoints those individuals that will seat them for that year because you can't, yeah, as a commissioner, you cannot vote to certify your own election. So with that being said, those boards, those temporary boards for that one year have all the powers and duties under Title twenty-five in those respective counties. It doesn't change the fact that that just because we have, they have temporary people for for one year, that those laws are thrown out the window. Those six individuals now have to work together to perfection, to conduct their elections. And those three individuals that are temporary have all the inherent powers under Title twenty-five. You know, just like these five individuals, or the five individuals in our county have all the same powers that the other sixty-six counties have.
Mr. Scavage, then Mr. Thor.
Mr. Lombardo.
I'm more at the time, yeah. Let's, 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 let's wrap it up here, guys.
I Googled, which is hard on my phone here, but there's Tri-Tech, reliable, that make machines similar to what you were purchasing. So I don't agree that sole sources, the picture almost looks like the one that you had sent us. The machine. Now, I didn't get into all the specifics of it, but I I think we just bought a an opener less than three years ago for twenty-five grand, and we're getting it again.
No. No. No, this machine does not include an opener. It could. Other counties could opt into that if they don't have, already have one, but we have no use for it, so.
And and this is, this is nothing against you, but this is part of the reason when you get something late Friday. And and we as council people try to do our due diligence and look into all of this and know that if indeed there's other companies that heard are manufacturing this type of machine, and we expend almost a half a million dollars and don't put it out for bid, it's all of us sitting here responsible for that, and that's not.
They, it's not the same type of equipment, I can assure you.
Well, what I'm going to, what I'm going to suggest to you is if we put out a bid for a car and and we just say that needs to be, like I said before, has to have a Mitsubishi engine, they think Ford, Chevy, or any, then dealers are going to bid on it? Probably not. I don't think you can put something out for bid to be that specific, just saying.
Well, we didn't put it out for bid because this is the only machine that we, that is available, excuse me. This is the only machine that's available for us to purchase that has all of the needs that we need for the Bureau.
Again, that's only one person's opinion.
No, it's a fact.
No, I think you need to put it out for bid and let the people come in and say, this is what we have to offer, this much money, so it can be competitive. Now, if it has a feature that you don't need and you can do it for less money, great. If it has a feature that you do need and it's more money, then we got to look at it. That's why we convince them to look at all of that.
Right, I understand how bidding works.
Okay, so then.
I'm just saying, that was not necessary.
A million dollars going forward.
This is the only piece of equipment that's available for us to purchase with our needs, so I'm not understanding your point.
All right, Mr. Thor.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, before I could comfortably vote on this, I I'd like to see an email from our Office of Law stating what Attorney Skeen said tonight, that somehow Title twenty-five applies differently for commissioner of counties versus Home Rule. I just like to see that somewhere to help guide me. That's all.
Mr. Mitchell.
This week, Brad's a two plus boat sale on the machine for this election. We have a special meeting over the next week, but they, like, would a representative from the vendor come and talk about?
That might be possible. I do have a phone call with the vendor tomorrow, so I could get some more information for council at that time.
And Mr. McBride, I just want to thank you for getting back to me earlier today with my questions. My big issue tonight is that it was never on a work session. You answered all my questions, and I appreciate that very much, and thank you. And going forward, I hope that no happens.
Thank you. I hope so. And moving forward also, I hope that you all know, I did not want to put it, if if there was any option to put it on the work session first, that's the route that I'm sure the county manager would have taken. But given the time sensitivity on this, that's the only reason I was put on the on voting session. And that's why I wanted to keep open that line of communication with council to make sure that you had all the information that you needed before tonight, so.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Mr. McBride.
A million and some dollar grant. We have the potential to lose and have to pay back.
Yes.
So I hope everybody, you know, considers those things. I know from past experiences, that could help us a lot. That's it.
All right, thank you. Go back to the beginning, receiving and discussing budget reports for July twenty twenty-two.
I think we're done.
We're done?
I think we are.
I know, Mr. Riley.
Budget reports are in the package.
I don't, Mr. Riley, sir.
That's, that's okay, sir. You okay, Andy? It was going to be just a few minutes. I think there's some successes there. We'll come back. I respect it.
All right, well, there's nothing further, uh, public comment? Public comment? Please keep it quick, ladies and gentlemen.
I don't make a very good.
Title twenty-five is very clear that, you know, it it defines the commission in it, okay? It defines, uh, that we are considered commissioners in the form of, when it comes to the the Board of Elections on, um, in county, in Home Rule Charter, okay? And you look up the definitions, then you go through to the rest of it, and you can see where it it defines us as the commissioners in that form, okay, of government. My, my whole thing is that it would have been respectful even just to go before the Board and get a vote on it. It wasn't put before us. It was basically, we were basically told, it seems like we are told everything from the Bureau now that we're applying for a grant, no questions asked, that we are doing this, that we are buying the equipment, that we, instead of the quote that I received and got for the drop boxes, now you're going through IT. Instead, we're not, we have no, no decision on that. I mean, now, all of a sudden, they are acting unilaterally without our, without our input, without our, our votes. Um, and I think that that presents a real major issue. You want to do that? That's fine. Then then dissolve the Board. You guys make all the decisions. I don't know what else to tell you. What other responsibilities do we have than to vote on these, these decisions that are put before us? But if they're not put before us, how do we even vote on them? Okay, these are, are, we are supposed to be making the purchases. When it comes down to this specifically, um, the machine tells whether there's naked ballots in it. It scans the outside of the envelope that the norm, girls would normally do, and it stamps a date and time on it. It's, it doesn't open them. It doesn't do much more than that. There, she, she'd be able to let you know a little bit more of what it does, but that's what it does. It scans them all. And instead of us opening them, it checks weight to see how much is in there. I looked it up. I looked into it a little bit. I would rather see us spend the money on more employees, which we can hire temporary employees and do the work ourselves. I mean, personally, that's where I'm looking at, and it would be a lot cheaper. So it's just my opinion.
Thanks, Ms. Saro. Mr. Raybo.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, I'll be really brief. Uh, I can't believe I heard what I just heard from the chief solicitor. Because, um, just to, just to clarify or condense what Mr. Urban said with regards to the law, uh, I think you all took an oath to uphold the state constitution in addition to the Home Rule Charter in the U.S. Constitution.
state constitution in addition to the Home Rule Charter in the U.S. Constitution. Under the state constitution, Article nine, section two, last sentence, says, "A municipal home rule charter shall not supersede," or let me get the exact language so you can hear verbatim, because I like to be ver- ver- verbatim. "A municipality which has a home rule charter may exercise any power or perform any function not denied by this constitution, by its home rule charter, or by the General Assembly at any time." Key words, "at any time." Mr. Skeen, you're telling me Article seven, section six of the state constitution with regards to election and registration laws, which say that they shall be uniform throughout the Commonwealth? You're saying the Home Rule Charter supersedes that? If you are actually going to say that, I will have to send you down to the State Supreme Court for continuing education just so you, that drills into your head. And I'm being very serious about this. So I would revisit your opinion if I were you, because I will file with the state tomorrow. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Chairman Lombardo. Can you hear me? Okay. Can everybody hearing you? Okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, my question is regards to the exploration for the CSI in regards to the prison system. Has anybody taken into consideration the bridge it spans to that lot or the, the partial, the grounds? Is there a need for our engineers to eyeball that and make sure that that's up to specs? We don't want to run into a situation where it could be aged like in West Nanticoke Bridge. And in the end, that be a part of the whole idea of investing down in, in that location. It's just something that ran across my mind. Thanks for your time. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Yeah, that, that is definitely part of our conversation. We've been, we've been talking about it. Um, Mr. Griffin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. On the voting machine, mail-in ballot processing equipment, Run Back is a huge contributor to the Democratic Party, as everybody has saw from Mr. Raybo's research. That's one issue that I have with that. But more importantly, it is not a sole source machine, and council can go out and do any Googling they want, and you will find multiple companies that do this mail-in ballot process sorting equipment. Tri-Tech is in fact one of them. There's other as well. Tri-Tech's in Wilmington, Delaware. So you could take a look at those. I'm concerned with the budget process on the report that Mr. Swetz gave the council tonight in that Fund two-ten, the two, two-ten fund, which is the five-dollar local use fee, now only has three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in it. When I go out into New World and I look and see what we spent the money on, a million three was in there last month. There's now only three hundred and sixty-two thousand in there, and we have to process refunds for people who paid, paid double on that fund. So I would like to know why we're using the two-ten fund for projects other than the matching fund. That money was put aside for the bridge in Trucksville, I believe. And that was supposed to be a matching fund, the two-for-one that council voted on. And now the money's being spent on various other projects to the point where we're almost out of that money. Hopefully, we'll have the matching funds to, to enjoy the, the matching grant, but apparently, we're not going to get that now. So I would like an explanation from the Budget and Finance Director as to why we're spending money on that. And do we have enough money to refund the people who paid double out of that fund? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Morgan?
Uh, yes. I'll try to keep it really short. I realize we've all had a very long evening. I want to start to comment on the machine. Where did you get the information? Who gave this information from the machine? Who made this? It was probably our election director. He's from Colorado. These machines, where you?
Ms. Morgan, we can't hear you.
The audio.
The audio is very difficult to hear, Ms. Morgan.
Okay. I'll try to make it very, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to know where you got the idea for this, for this machine. I can guess it was from Mr. Sussex, our director, since he worked in Colorado, and these machines were last used in Colorado for the election. Check out the manufacturer. It can take you very long. I wish you'd do a little bit of homework on this before you're voting for this machine. We don't need any more machines for our election. We have software, we have printers, we have scanners, we have a back ballot counter. We have a checkbook on the rate on this machine. I'd like to know. The more machines we have, the more fraud happens. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
He needs adjourned.